And while staff was kind enough to provide me with my beverage of choice, I don't have a gavel, so I'll just kind of call us to order here with this special workshop of the Board of Supervisors to have a good conversation about capital facilities planning and expenditures. And this will lack some of the formality of a normal board meeting, so as we're moving along, if folks have questions, feel free to jot them down when we hit a break. We're going to have several different sections that we go through, and if people have questions, including folks that are assembled here, have any questions, except for the guy walking in right now, he's banned from asking any questions.
Good call.
So, yeah, he talks too long, blah, blah, blah. Feel free to jot them down and add each section as we roll, before we roll into the next one. We'll see if anybody has any questions. And we do have microphones, and so if anybody has a question, we are going to ask you to speak in the microphone so that we can get this on the record. And though we lack the formality of a normal board meeting, we do have the respect for our nation that we always do, so we will begin with a flag salute led by our county council, Karen Schwab.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And with that, since staff didn't script me very well, I'm just going to hand it off to them and let them roll with it. How's that?
Thank you, Chair. Well, first off, I want to just really acknowledge the folks that are around the table here and those who are sitting in the back of the room that are going to be participating this afternoon. A lot of work's honestly gone into this effort, getting to this point today, to have, really, I think, a thorough conversation really about our capital facility and infrastructure needs countywide. The ultimate outcome that I'm looking for, and hopefully that you will gain from this at the end of the day, is really want a clear understanding of the individual projects and the scope that and needs associated with each of these projects. The other is, we're looking for some direction, one around, from a staff perspective regarding either moving forward with some projects to do more thorough analysis, either financially and operationally, as well as possibly a project timeframe. So, the first phase of this conversation is really, and I'll tee this off to Dave DeFonte here in a second, but really, our effort is to really have a good formal dialogue. We're going to have individual departments that will be speaking on the projects. Steve Newsom, our facilities director, will be talking to kind of the overview of the project, and then we'll give an opportunity for questions from you all as we move along. So, I'll turn that over to Dave about kind of what we've been doing in our five-year capital CIP program up to this point.
If the little blue thing is on, then did it get turned on? There's a switch on the box.
This one's working.
That one is.
All right. Good afternoon. Dave DeFonte with the CEO. This is the third time I've been in front of the board discussing capital priorities, and I tend to lead off every one of these discussions with my continued amazement regarding how this county has, for at least 30 years, dealt with, in a very proactive and fiscally prudent fashion, capital planning. I'm still amazed by it even two and a half years in, and I wanted to just quickly go through a little bit of that before launching into today. So, starting in 1993, the county, as I think all of you are probably more well aware than I am, adopted the comprehensive facilities master plan. That laid a foundation for facilities in the county. At the time, we had DeWitt, and we know the condition of DeWitt at the time, and still some of the remaining condition of DeWitt. So, it was really incumbent upon the county to start looking at how we're going to plan facilities over the next 20, 30, 40 years to serve both existing residents as well as new development coming in. As part of the effort to address new development, the county also adopted in 1996 a capital facilities impact fee, and that's been a very key funding source for capital facilities ever since that time, and will be part of the discussion both today as well as moving forward. In the late 90s, the county built the Larry Otto, the finance and administration building with debt, as well as constructed the juvenile detention facility. And then in the 2000s, really started moving towards more of a cash model, where a lot less reliance on debt, a lot more reliance on cash funding buildings. That includes the CDRC building, South Placer Adult Correctional Facility, the Animal Services Center, as well as, in 2016, the purchase of the 1,000 Sunset Building. So, you know, none of these happened just by happenstance. This was decades of planning, decades of savings, to make all of these happen. And, you know, that legacy of proactive capital planning continues today. So, over the last couple of years, we've had two workshops with the board, one in March 2017, another in August 2017. In August of 2017, your board directed preparation of a capital improvement plan, which is now part of our annual budget process. That includes building a number of buildings, including the Coroner Facility, a number of jail projects, Placer Parkway Phase 1, the fairgrounds, et cetera. So, today is really to look at that next set of potential projects and continue, again, that proactive planning that we've been engrossed in for a number of decades now. So, the key thrust of today is to discuss and prioritize additional potential projects that we may want to launch over the next few years. And before we get to that, Jane Christensen was going to discuss, just highlight some discussion we had with the board a month or so ago about budget projections, and then also speak a bit to funding sources for capital projects.
Just waiting for my AV. I'm here, in a brief cameo, to recap some of the information that we shared with you at the mid-year biennial review, I'm sorry, the mid-year annual review on February 26. Just to remind you about the fiscal state of the county vis-à-vis current expenditures operationally, as well as the capital discussion you're here for today. This is a slide that you've seen before, again, late February, kind of restating some of the challenges that we're facing with regard to pressures on the general fund, given our current operating budget, current and projected, that is. Also, two, snapshot of our general fund reserves and fund balance, which, as we contend with these operating realities, is being drawn down over time. Again, these are slides you've seen before. This is just briefly recapping them for context for your discussion today. And then lastly, as you saw in the staff report, a recap beyond any potential operating funds that we would have for debt service going forward, what kind of financial capacity we have. We have a few other capital funding sources that have been put away over the years, to Dave's point about the prudent fiscal planning over the last few decades, that are also possible pockets to use for the capital needs you're discussing here today.
And I would mention on that slide that those funding sources assume full build-out of the five-year CIP as it is today. So, after all of these facilities are paid for and built, that's what you would have left over to use. So, before we jump into talking project by project, I wanted to talk a little bit about the proposed structure of the tiers for prioritization. So, we've had a lot of conversation over the last year or so about how to prioritize these projects, and, you know, our conversations have included both quantitative and qualitative metrics. And what we started really looking at when we looked at the projects and everything in front of us was they sort of fell into three categories. Tier one are projects that at least we consider to be ones that either had significant funding already committed and/or available, so special revenues that really are akin, are applicable just to that building or only a subset of buildings. Two, that may meet a critical need that we're facing right now. And/or three, can provide significant efficiencies, cost savings, avoided rehabilitation costs of existing buildings, or return on investment. So, you'll see in the staff report that we think a few of the projects in front of us today meet one or multiple of those metrics, and it's our feeling that they are what we would consider to be tier-one projects for your consideration. Number two are proposed projects that might meet some or all of those tier-one metrics, but require or are reliant upon a tier-one project moving forward first. So, the two that you'll see in the staff report are the Ag/Farm Advisor Building. If the HHS Admin Building is constructed as planned, that would lead to a series of moves of staff on theoretically the government center should it occur there, and that would essentially delay the need for an Ag Building indefinitely. So, that's why we consider it to be a tier-two project, because frankly, and at least in our opinion, if that HHS building were to be built, we really don't need to entertain, at least for the foreseeable future, the need for that Ag Building. In a similar fashion, you'll see that land identification and/or acquisition for a replacement Burton Creek facility would be our proposed step one if we're to pursue that project. Tier two would be the actual construction of that project, but really, it's identifying a site and even potentially acquiring that site as that first step before we jump into programming, determining the actual need for space, the inhabitants, et cetera. Really, that location is going to be a very critical factor that leads into all the other planning that needs to happen. And tier three are proposed projects that we do think we will likely need at some point in the future, but they really, at least in our first blush analysis, didn't meet the metrics associated with tier one. So, you'll see projects that are needed to accommodate additional staff as we see, as we grow as a county in the future, but really don't seem to be as oppressing a need as what we would consider to be those top-tier projects. So, later in this workshop, Todd's going to lead the board through an exercise to review the tier structure, review our proposed prioritization of the projects and how they may fall into the tiers, and then also ask the board to identify any projects that you would like us to prepare a financing plan around and/or financing options and return to the board in the next couple of months. But before we get to that, we wanted to walk through each of the projects in some level of detail, and Steve Newsom is prepared to do so. So, our proposal, and this is outlined as Attachment A in the staff report, this is the proposed agenda for today. Our proposal would be that Steve, take each of these projects one by one in alphabetical order. So, the crime lab would be first. He could speak to some of the nuts and bolts of the project, and then ask if there's a department head or department heads that want to speak to the need for that project as well. Have some question-and-answer comment from the board, and just a discussion around it, and then move on to the next project. So, we would go project by project and essentially have a discussion around them prior to having that prioritization discussion led by Todd a little bit later. Does that work?
Yeah. Before we jump into that, first of all, any questions or comments before?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
And my question is this. Did you say, sorry, folks, I think it's the speaker behind you. Ah, yes, it is. All right. The projects, one through six, that you have on the front page of the staff report, which were from the five-year CIP plan previously, those are already, dollars are already set aside. We have the funds for those. Those are all moving forward. And so, the graph that Jane showed is the additional funds that we have available for CIP.
The last, the Excel spreadsheet at the end, yes. So, that Excel spreadsheet assumes build-out of all of these projects, those would be the dollars left over for your use.
Okay. Thank you.
Turn off my microphone so I was too, try to minimize that feedback. Supervisor Montgomery, do you have anything?
Just a clarification on the process. So, each project is going to be rolled out individually. There's an expectation of conversation around that. I'm assuming that at the end of it, we'll have the opportunity to sort of weigh the merits of each of the projects against each other as compared to trying to comment on them in a vacuum.
Absolutely. So, number five, we would be going through project by project, then number six would be that board prioritization where the discussion sort of comes to a head and you discuss all of the projects together.
All right. Anybody else have anything they would like to add at this point before we move on to individual projects? Okay. Then, I just wanted to share, as staff is going through these projects, kind of some thoughts that I had on how I'm looking at these more globally, as we look at the county and the county's development and our priorities in terms of where we want to invest in the ground. This gets to really your, under the tier one where you identify return on investment. I've been beating this drum for a little while, and I'm not sure how effectively I've communicated it, other than ad nauseam. I think that we need to prioritize, and I'm not speaking on specific projects, per se, but on that note of return on investment, have we taken a step back to look at the county, what our various tax rate areas are, and where we can, if we perhaps lead on some investment in some areas that have the most favorable tax rates for the county, we can expect a good return on investment by us making some infrastructure investments to spur development? And I'm really throwing these out more so that as we go through these conversations, you might be able to circle back to say, this is an area, Kirk, where this might apply to what you were saying. So, that's really why I'm throwing this out up front. So, that's one thing that I want to know. Are we cognizant of that as we're looking at whether they are individual projects that we are taking the lead on, on a building here and a building there, or as we look at development proposals received by the county, or there are things that we say, if we did this, then the private sector would be likely to do that? The second thing, as I look particularly at DeWitt and our plans in Sunset, and this kind of gets back to the tax rate area conversation, is are we maximizing our potential for success by leveraging the private sector to the greatest extent possible? Are we using what assets we have, be they dollars we've collected, property we own, that we might not need anymore, whatever, and are we engaging the private sector aggressively to say, you tell us what highest and best use is for these assets? Maximize the value to the county, and perhaps even partner on the infrastructure improvements necessary in order to bring it to fruition? So, again, I'm just throwing this out so that as we go through the conversations on a project-by-project basis, you're able to say, this is an area where we could possibly do that. And then, that's it. Supervisor, what do you have?
If I could map onto that, because I think we're on the same page, but I want to make sure we are on the same page and with staff. So, for example, if we invest capital in a capital project, it's going to likely drive up some costs, maybe save us a lot of costs, a particular project, frankly, we'd probably do both, depending, could be operating efficiencies, that kind of thing. But if we put some money in a particular place, it may also then stimulate other projects that we want, and that would have an impact on property taxes, and, you know, I don't think we want to look this over a 50-year period, but we want to look at some kind of a reasonable kind of a thing, sort of in the totality of the economic impact on a return on investment type of a notion. So, if we haven't done that, you know, can we do that as we give you a direction as it relates to, because frankly, there are some things we could invest in that would be great amenities to the community that might actually cost a county out of pocket cost, and so we have to be cognizant of that. And the best example I can think of off the top of my head is, years ago, we were presented with the option of whether or not we wanted to absorb the Dry Creek Fire District, and the fiscal analysis in total was such that there were some fundamental reasons for doing that, as related to fire protection, of course, but then we have to look at economically. So, it looked like, in the beginning and for a while, we were going to have a negative cash flow from it, but that would all accommodate itself, plus interest over time, and it's my understanding that's essentially what did happen. And so, that's the kind of thought process you're expressing, right?
Exactly. Exactly.
So, if we haven't done it, but we could do it, I think that's the kind of feedback that would be helpful, at least to a couple of us.
Yeah. We, I can't say that we have done that. We absolutely can do that, and I would just ask, you know, when we get to that point in the workshop, you know, whatever specific direction you want to provide to us, we'll absolutely provide whatever information you need and get it back to you.
Let me just briefly touch on that as well. There are some areas, when you talk about reinvestment of what we do with some of these buildings, we are going to talk to some of these. So, it's not going to be all-inclusive, but I do think you're going to hear a sense of that. The other piece is, my intent is, in the event that you want to move forward or look more in-depth at certain projects, we will come back with a financing plan that ties directly back to that reinvestment component as well, along with the financing component. So, we may not have that thorough discussion at this meeting, but I think we can touch on all those pieces, and you may have some specific things that you'd want us to come back with as part of the financing plan at the end of the day. Is that fair enough?
Yeah. Thank you. Any other, yes, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah. Just one more thing that I think we should be thinking about, just sort of globally through this process, which is that on page two of the staff report, it calls out that construction and operating cost estimates for these projects are provided in Attachment C. Since none of these are fully funded, and they will compete with each other, they will also compete with other county-wide capital needs, including but not limited to road improvements and maintenance, sunset area planning and infrastructure needs, achievable housing, parks and trails master plan, plaster legacy, IT project opportunities, and other economic development initiatives. Something that I think would be very helpful to me, and I think it would probably be helpful to the rest of the board, is understanding what are at least some ballpark figures of those competing costs? Because if we're working under this last slide of the capital funding sources that are going to be available five years from now, we need, as part of our global perspective on this, to understand what those other costs are going to be as well, because we are going to have to balance the tier one, two, and three projects that are in front of us today with these other projects that we know are out there and are going to potentially have some fairly significant costs, because the resources are limited, the needs on the face of it are pretty unlimited.
Correct. You know, I think one of the things that we'd like to come back to, and as Dave alluded to earlier, we would come back with a financing plan that'd probably take place in May when we revisit the overall budget request from the department. So, not only are we going to look at the current fiscal year requirements, but we'd want to take a five-year, at least a minimum on a five-year on the operating side, because we're talking not about one- and five-year horizons. We're talking about 20- and 30- and 40-year horizons on core public infrastructure, and I want to make sure that we're also looking at the operational impacts. I think that's what you're alluding to there, is all the other competing needs alongside that, so you can make a well-informed decision. So, I think your points will take in, and it would be part of the overall conversation, looking at the budget, at the same time, we're looking at this capital financing plan.
And I think part of that, and I've mentioned this before, is getting a better understanding of what our constituents and our taxpayers in Placer County are looking for in terms of infrastructure moving forward. You know, we may define public-serving infrastructure in one way. Our constituents and taxpayers may define it differently, and I think it's important for us to understand how those intersect if they do.
So, on that, and this not to be argumentative in any way, but just
Go for it, Karen.
To provide, you know, a little bit, I guess, of the perspective, staff walked us through the history of this, and the fact is that in 1993, Don Lunsford led our board through the conversation about the capital facilities needs that we're going to have in the future, which got us to the point of saying, okay, in an environment of Prop 13, being able to look at what our property tax is going to be, assuming, you know, markets don't fluctuate too wildly, knowing what our revenues are going to be based on a Prop 13 environment, and knowing what our cost of services are, we can foresee a future where we simply don't have the money to build the buildings that we're going to need. And so, that was why in '94, our board commissioned at that time, kind of that, all right, if we were to go down the road of the fee, what's that fee going to look like? And that was what became to be known as the Wrecked House Wrath Study, which Robert will remember, because when he got on the board then in '95, and this came back to our board in '96 for the adoption of the fee, Mr. Bloomfield and I had quite the go when Mr. Bloomfield had to finally acknowledge, as the Wrecked House Wrath Report pointed out, that not only does new development, under this kind of an environment where we have the fee structure, not only does new development pay its way, given the way Prop 13 limited the escalation of property taxes, new development was actually subsidizing the old development, because it was the new development with the addition of all these fees that was going to pay for the capital facilities going forward. I only say that because when we look at, when we look at some of these things that are listed on page two, we have other, we collect other fees beyond capital facilities fees for road improvements. We collect other fees for a number of things that are on here. The capital facilities fee was truly established for what are the county's needs for our buildings, courthouses in Tahoe and health and human services, those kinds of things. Now, to your point, the ongoing annual operational costs obviously need to be considered as you go and fund these things, but each of these items that were listed here, I think, with the exception of the information technology, project opportunities, and the economic development initiatives, each of the others have a fee that we already collect on new development that is supposed to go to that from a capital standpoint. So, I'm less concerned about the capital impact on those, because we are collecting fees for those, but to Supervisor Montgomery's point, there will be obviously the ongoing annual operation burden that we do have to consider.
And I think, just to further clarify, part of my concern around this is recognizing that we have specific fees that are collected for new development. We have existing deficits in many of these things that new development by law cannot pay for. And so, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, our ongoing, particularly, you know, road and bridge improvements and infrastructure like that, and basic backbone infrastructure that we do supply in some areas of the county, is envisioned in this larger approach to how we spend limited dollars to the best effect for our ratepayers.
One thing that you'll see in each of the presentations, we looked at both the capital and then the estimated operating costs of each of these buildings, above and beyond. So, part of that financing plan that we'll be coming back to is looking at not just the building itself, but how's it impact on the operational cost. You're also going to see some areas in here about if we don't do anything, and I'll be honest, if we don't do anything is not now it's free. There are major public infrastructure deficiencies that we have in these individual buildings, and we've talked to them, and Steve and his group have done a really good job of outlining those. So, I think I want to share that with you as well, because I do think, putting it in context of, there's an investment to be made, it's right, where are the right investments to be made? Because none of this stuff is, there's a cost to some of the buildings you're going to hear about today. So, I'll just leave that with you on that.
Okay. Can you hear me?
I talked so long, the screen looked down.
All right. All right. Here we go. Okay. Good morning. Steve Newsom, Director of Facilities Management. And as stated, I will walk us through each of these projects and discuss them a bit, and we'll have input and further detailed information from the department heads that are representing them. The list of projects is here, and it's in alphabetical order. I want to make sure that that's clear. There's no ranking other than our alphabet that lists them here. The first project is probably one of the most unique ones, in that it started in 2016. A study was done, which was a crime lab and a coroner facility at the time, and as you are aware, the coroner facility has moved forward, and the crime lab since then has really kind of searched for alternate paths for it to come to fruition. And I will let our district attorney, Scott Owens, give you some details on that current proposal and where it stands now.
Thank you. Scott Owens, Placer County District Attorney. Can you hear me okay? Is that on? First off, when I saw that they were going to be competitive, I wanted to note that I sat over here and they sat over there. But, you know, Mr. DeFonte and his memo to the board used the word fiscally prudent capital project planning. You know, I started working for the county in 1983, and my first 20
Also, just simply providing better services to our constituents. But where we are housed has never stopped Placer County from building a reputation in our region. A reputation as being innovators and for being aggressive in our law enforcement efforts to keep our community safe. We are particularly known as a community that is tough on crime and holds offenders accountable. I'm not sure who's got the, oh, there we go. I'm not sure who's got the, oh, there we go. Thank you. There we go. A few years ago, we came to you with a concept. It was a vision based upon the failures of our criminal justice system to live up to the standards in the areas, in the area of criminal forensics. It was a vision spurred on by the growth of forensics within the nation over the last 30 years, and a recognition that we are not fully utilizing all of the tools that we should, that we should be in a modern world. It was a vision that started out as little more than a brainstorming idea and underwent numerous changes and revisions along the way, with the goal of providing the best forensic technology and timely results to our law enforcement communities. While the challenges remain, the vision presented to you today is not what it looked like when we first presented it to you. We have spoken to our criminal justice partners, we've spoken to our neighboring communities, we've spoken to our constituents, and we've spoken to you. We've worked hard to do our homework in how this vision would fit in Placer County and adhere to the standard we want to see in our public agencies. First, we recognize that forensic technology is not being utilized in Placer County on the level that it is being used in other areas of the country. We've visited crime labs from Baltimore, Denver, Denver, and Los Angeles. What became, became clear was the many things that we were not utilizing in our fight against crime. We barely have the ability to use DNA on crimes of violence, and to my knowledge, we have never utilized it on property crimes, yet studies show there is a scary correlation between rapists and burglars. As the elected district attorney, I feel we owe it to our community to at least meet the current standards of forensic technology. We need to be proactive in helping law enforcement in any way we can. That begins with a crime lab. It'll help us solve crimes quicker, it'll help us resolve cases quicker in the criminal justice system. It would allow us to prioritize and greatly reduce processing times. There are many public benefits, two of which are the most basic, the ability to move offenders into programs in a timeframe that gets them the help they need, and the ability to stop crimes at the property level before criminals advance to further crimes and more heinous crimes. Now we have an opportunity to collaborate with Sac State. I believe collaborating with Sacramento State streamlines our goals. By partnering with education, we not only catch up, we get ahead. By its very nature, education brings cutting-edge ideas and technology. We've tried to come up with solutions that meet all of your concerns. We've heard your concerns about pensions and increasing the size of the county workforce. For those reasons, we have explored the ideas of a joint powers authority, a JPA. We have heard your concerns about independence and transparency. The JPA provides that by bringing all facets of law enforcement into the oversight. This is not only a district attorney-run facility, the JPA board will consist of representatives from the Board of Supes, CSUS, the District Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Office, local police, the defense bar, and perhaps, if we expand, other jurisdictions. We've heard your concerns about building costs. We've addressed that by rightsizing the building. The Smith Group in 2016 set forth a building that required 36,000 square feet. By changing the grossing factor to a, to a, to a 1.4, consistent with other county buildings, that dropped our square footage requirement down to 30,000 square feet. When we first started this project, we were looking at $450 a square foot. Unfortunately, we're now up to the estimate of $810 per square foot. The goal, bring it in under $30 million. One way that we can do this is for, is, is we build 10,000 square feet out for toxicology and DNA, and we lease some of the remaining space out, which gives us room for future growth and to take on other jurisdictions, which will help. Sacramento State would provide a positive cash flow as we got the lab up and running, became ASCLAB certified, and identified future partners. We're struggling with the Also, we feel that if Placer Ranch winds up being approved, it would catalyze the campus and the sunset area. We've heard your concerns about ongoing operating costs and the questions of how to control them. The JPA would receive a set amount of funding through the county. That funding would be set at $1 million. We believe, under the, under the costs, as we've outlined them now, this 14-employee independent lab would come in at about $830,000. How we got there was fairly simple. We took what we were spending now currently outsourcing, we looked at other law enforcement funds that would be available to put towards this, we looked at, we, we took a very conservative view of the lease income, we looked at outside participation from other counties, Yolo, Nevada, and, and Eldorado, as well as other counties that we have not necessarily figured in, but have certainly have expressed an interest, and we came to a net annual expense of $830,000. It would be up to the JPA to supplement those funds through the university, through grant opportunities, through partnerships with other agencies and jurisdiction, and other, partnerships with other agencies and jurisdictions. We, we've worked hard to limit the county's exposure while still accomplishing the goal. We've looked at a permanent endowment of the director position, the use of interns to assist with staffing and growth, and law enforcement savings by reducing crime and speeding along cases. I've brought three letters, which I believe have been provided to you, from the jurisdictions which I, which I just mentioned. The framework is in place, the details are being developed. We ask that you approve our framework so that we can continue to develop an operating blueprint. We promise to continue to craft a plan to implement our vision and to serve our county in the best way possible. Some of you realize that this is not the first time I've championed the idea of a lab to you. Some of you are probably even tired of me continuing to sound off about it. It's been about 11 years, I think, since I, I first mentioned the idea. I was told not to dwell on the necessity, but to focus on the financial plan, because you understood the necessity. But I need to, I need to reiterate, we have to focus on the necessity. If you focus simply on the financial plan, I have woefully failed in impressing upon you the necessity. Yesterday, I sent out an email to some of my supervisors asking for updates on the turnaround times on lab results. I told them the ballpark was okay, but it had to be numbers that we could stand behind. This is just a few of the responses that I received from the supervisory folks. Felony Supervising Deputy District Attorney and two-time California Rural and Medium Size County Prosecutor of the Year, Dave Tellman, said, "As for DNA, it is our experience that DOJ won't even assign an analyst unless the case is set for trial." DUI Supervisor Jamie Smith had this to say, "I had my team go through their pending cases and get numbers together. It's taking a long," and she capitalized, "long, "time to get blood results back. We have a total of 61 cases pending charges, because we do not have toxicology results back. It has taken anywhere from eight to 12 months to get results back. I would say it is rare to get results back in six months." We also have several cases, felonies in particularly, in particular, that we've had to file despite not having toxicology results, because the public safety risk is too great. She also included the stats for her DUI team. For brevity, I, I will only discuss the late summer 2018 cases. Deputy District Attorney Nikki Sid has two cases from June 2018 that she is waiting results on, four from July. DDA Robin Miller has four cases from June 2018, six from July, and four from August. DDA Devin Portillo has one from April 2018, four from May 2018, one from June, five from July, 10 from August 2018. Newly appointed Assistant District Attorney Jennifer Miskiewicz says, "I've been up at juvenile hall, the juvenile unit, all day, and sat with Colette, another deputy district attorney, in court. Just so you are aware, we are not getting admissions on DUIs up here, because the confirmatory is at least nine months out, and defense is reluctant to resolve without them. Obviously, the goal is to get the juvenile case wrapped up pretty quick, and it would appear that a lot of juvenile offenders are getting a pass on their drug DUIs. They have been resolving for other allegations. I know it's, is an offense that's priorable at this level, but clearly, it's not sending a good message. Imagine parenting a teenager, and he's a junior in high school, and you can't impose the discipline until he graduates." Because that's where we're at with juvenile DUIs. Ms. Miskiewicz also forwarded a March 6, 2019, email from Deputy District Attorney Colette Jallow. DDA Colette Jallow was asked for results from, was asking for results from July 29, 2018. This is the response that she received on March 7, 13 days ago, 2019, from the Department of Justice. And, and I have copies here, if you would like them, of that email. "This is a tox case. We have performed the preliminary screen, and based on those results and the nature of the offense, it was determined that two conformatory tests would be conducted. They are both assigned out, but have not been started. We have it in our system to be completed by May 29, 2019, two months prior to the statute of limitations. We use this date for all of our cases in order to prioritize all of the cases we receive. Our hope is to get it completed before that date. Over the last few years, we've been trying to bring this project together. I've been asked what seems like a million different questions from board members. I have been met with enthusiasm, I've been met with skepticism. In the end, I have always felt and suspected that you, as a board, want to be good stewards of your constituents' dollars. I have always felt that you wanted to arm yourself with the most knowledge that you can before you make a decision about spending those dollars. I've always felt that you owed it to your constituents to represent your public well. I'm here to tell you that the 43 attorneys that represent the people of this community feel the same way about their cases. Before they make a decision about something that affects people's lives and freedoms, they want to be armed with that necessary information, and unfortunately, it's not just, it's just not getting done with the Department of Justice right now. I feel like we're asking them to work with blindfolds on and one arm tied behind their back. Just simply the cost of having those attorneys go back and review those cases over and over before they make that, to see what's up, to see what's missing, to make that call or send that email to the Department of Justice, is costing us as taxpayers money. And you can imagine the frustration that they have for their, that they have from the inability to gain access to the information they so desperately need to protect that, this very same public. That is, in short, where we are. Our ask of you today points us in the direction of where we would like to be. The following are recommendations for the approval parameters of a county crime lab to be shown in the capital improvement plan for facilities in year five of the five-year plan. A JPA, we hope for a JPA or similar organization with other partnering public entities. Construction costs of less than $30 million, adjusted for inflation. Annual operating budget contribution of less than $1 million. The employees would work for the JPA. Classroom leasing opportunities for Sacramento State to catalyze the campus and sunset area, should Placer Ranch be approved. Acknowledgement that the board is not committing itself to Placer Ranch, should it not be approved or does not move forward. This is a rare chance to make a dynamic and positive change in our criminal justice system. We look forward to providing further details and getting further commitments from our potential partners, but to do that, we need to say that it's a viable project, and we hope that we're able to say that after today.
All right. Board members have questions of Scott and his presentation? Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Oh, it went down. The $30 million cost to this include infrastructure?
That does. It, it, it does include, I think we're looking at a, a cost of $26 million to build the building, and then additional bill, the additional money would then
For sewer and water is what I'm
Yes, exactly. I believe so, yes.
Has there been a site identified in the sunset area for this?
There is not. Originally, a couple of years ago, we were looking at, obviously with the morgue, and now we're looking, you know, should Placer Ranch be approved, hopefully there? But that's
We're not sure. So you would have to work with Sacramento State in order to identify, or the Placer Ranch folks to identify a site?
Correct. And Sacramento State has been excited about the project, even when it looked like it was going to be in the
At the government, at the San Tucci Center?
Yes.
And how, how is the JPA? Who's going to be on the joint powers?
So I think, I think that's kind of open, I think we're going to identify that in the upcoming months. You'll see from the letters that both Eldorado County, Yolo County, and Nevada County have all expressed interest in that. So should they join and, and bring finances to the table, either as, you know, I, I think it's appropriate to, to give them a voice. I, I think the sheriff's department should absolutely be a sitting member, the Board of Supes should be a sitting member. I think local police should have a representative that they could choose through plea on that board. Sacramento State, if it's appropriate, should have a, a voice on that board. They're bringing the, the intern, intern aspect to that program and, and hopefully helping provide us a workforce.
So I, you mentioned a lot of potential members. How long, how large is this JPA going to be? Do you have any idea yet? Would the public defender's office be involved in that?
I, I think, I think we have certainly considered putting, having the, the defense bar have a representative on it for transparency reasons. Whether or not that's a public defender or another, another, a defense advocate, I, I think is open for discussion. And, and of course, we would need to explore if there's any potential conflict, but I don't believe that there would be to have them have a representative.
So if we decide to move forward fulfilling your request, how soon would a site be identified? Would it take a year to do that? Do we have more?
I, I, I hope we'd move way quicker than that, but I, I could, certainly couldn't tell you a, a timeframe with certainty.
All right, thank you.
I have a couple. So I'm curious, the statement that DOJ won't assign an analyst to DNA work unless the case is set for trial. How do you set a case for trial if you don't know the veracity of your evidence based on the DNA?
That is exactly the conundrum that we're fighting. You know, we're only limited, we're limited as to the samples we can take. Last I heard, it was four on a homicide case, which, you know, if you have a murder scene, you have a transport scene, you got a dump scene, there's three of them right there. So if you've got a, a bloody scene, you've got a problem, you know, and, and our folks are going to have to answer for that on the, on the, on the stand, why they didn't do additional testing, why they didn't go further, and, and that's a problem. The other problem, obviously, is from a, from an ethical standpoint, what can you file? It's, it's, it's very difficult.
Okay. Construction costs, is that a finished building or cold shell?
That's a finished building.
Finished, so that's all your lab stuff, that's everything all in, ready to roll?
Correct.
Okay.
We, the additional room gives us, what we've done is we've pared it back to being the bare bones minimum of what we need to stay in business as, as a criminal justice, you know, organization. It, we would leave room for expansion, you know, subject to additional funds coming in or identifying additional funds, additional grant opportunities, where down the road, we might be able to take on computer forensics, we might be able to take on a more elaborate fingerprint or firearm area. There's, there'll be room for growth, and we'd be able to grow as, as we identified funding.
But the 30,000 square feet, that, that is enough lab space to meet not just our needs, but also the potential needs of some of the partners you identified?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then to Supervisor Holmes's comments about the, or questions about the structure of the JPA, several of us serve on, on JPAs that are just, the, the representation is just those entities like PCTPA, the various incorporated cities and ours, but we have a technical advisory board that meets, that's made up of a broader group of folks that advises the JPA on various issues. So to the question of the, you know, the defense bar and all the rest, maybe that's an appropriate role. I, it would be my preference that the people who are, who are invested in dollars, invested in this, are the ones who make up that governing board of the JPA, but certainly, you can have an advisory board to that JPA as well.
I don't agree, I, I don't disagree, that would be perfect, yes.
Okay.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, following up on something that Chairman Yularen just raised, I think initially, when this was brought forward to us, it was going to be 36,000 square feet, somewhere around there.
It was.
And we were looking at, I think, six different services?
We, we were. We felt that the, the costs were getting out of control and spiraling, not so much the cost of the building necessarily, it was, while it was certainly more, it was the ongoing cost and the number of analysts that were going to be required to keep that going was driving up yearly what we were putting out. So we wanted to bring it down, dial it down to, to our, our current needs, and then expand in a more orderly fashion going forward as we identified additional funding.
So, so now it appears from your report what the proposal is, is 30,000 square feet, roughly, two services, but we're still talking that, that million dollar?
Not just two, we'd, we'd still be doing solid dose analysis, we'd, we'd be doing blood and urine, and we would also be doing, we'd be handling breath tests. and we would also be doing, we'd be handling breath tests, and then we would also be doing DNA.
Okay. But we're still talking about that roughly million dollars a year of ongoing costs to the county even with the downsizing, is that right?
Even with the downsizing, correct, yes.
Okay.
I think we're at 830.
I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, if I might, my recollection, and I know Becky's here, when we've been in Washington on a couple of occasions, meeting with DOJ and had the conversations about Crime Lab, the conversations I seem to recall tended more toward, if you guys build it, we're happy to help you with some grants on the operational side, but we're not really in the game so much in the helping you build it side, but yeah, go ahead and build something and then we'll talk to you about the grant operations to help with that. Is that your recollection?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say that is, that has been a very clear message that we've gotten from multiple sources for labs that are up and running, is that there was no money available as they were building the lab, but once they got that lab built, there was an amazing amount of grants available. And, you know, one of the persons that has told us that is Jill Spriggs, who used to run the state DOJ labs, later ran the Sacramento Crime Lab, and has served as an advisor to this project going forward.
Okay.
And I think I was in on some of those conversations with folks at the DOJ, and one of the things that they also alluded to, and again, I don't know specifically what it would take to follow up on it, is, you know, if we had $830,000 a year, we could put that towards additional employees who were dedicated to our needs at the existing DOJ lab. And so I want to make sure that we've fully analyzed that opportunity as well, so that we're really weighing apples to apples in any decision that we make.
I would tell you that in 2010, when we made the decision to move from a private vendor to the Department of Justice, we offered to pay for two analysts down there that would just be dedicated to do Placer County work. They would never hire those analysts, and they've never been willing to do a, to make a prioritization. Likewise, around that same timeframe, I can't remember the exact year, we received a $500,000 cold case grant, and we wanted to hire some, a DNA analyst to work these cold cases. They would only do that if we paid overtime fees. You know, their normal fees plus overtime fees to do that, which we did. It was worth it to us to get that done. But they have not been real receptive on those things.
Yeah, and your point absolutely noted, but I just want to make sure that we are looking at both sides of that to say, does it actually make sense just to say, hey, give us two more and we'll pay overtime? Because that means it's a whole bunch of other things that we're then not taking on as well. But I just think for this board to make any informed decision, we need to understand what those different options and opportunities are.
And I don't disagree with your approach. We have approached Sacramento, DOJ, and Solano County with the idea that maybe we could just pay for an analyst, they could work under their lab director, pay them an oversight fee, you know, plus, and see if we could make it work out. So far, that just hasn't worked out so far. But I totally agree with the approach.
Supervisor Wagen, did you have something to add?
Yeah, so I'm envisioning that as we get through all this, at the end, we're going to decide which ones we want more information on and as a go, but with direction to staff. But in light of this specific conversation, I've also sat in on some of those meetings in DC. And so I think it's wise that the county look at the worst-case scenario, which is we don't get any grants. But I think Becky, particular what would be useful wherever you are out there. I see it. I was of the impression that if we did something particularly, if it was innovative, in light of the opportunity that we might have to partner with California State University System, that those are the kinds of things that they like, and if we could have a feel of historically what kinds of grants are becoming available, particularly in today's venue, I guess, that kind of filter in would be helpful for us, because at least we'd have to look at the worst case, but we could at least set that off against what we would think if we did a really good package of this, what might be available to help out.
And I've got some information that I can provide you on those grants.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Supervisor Wagen.
Any other board members have any other comments or questions on your district attorney's presentation? Any members of public county questions on the VA's presentation? Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, Scott is up for his next building request. This is the District Attorney Office Building over at our San Tucci Justice Center location. So I'll turn it back to Scott, and he can talk through this project. Or Steve?
It's just the one in the background. Perfect. Thank you. All right. So to orient you, this is the San Tucci Justice Center owned by the county. You can see on the right-hand side along Highway 65, the jail, the minimum security facility, and then you'll see next to that, the new coroner's facility that's currently scheduled to break ground in June. So just in about two or three months, that project will be under construction. To the south of that, the courthouse. And then at the bottom left is Building B, which currently houses the District Attorney and probation and revenue services there. Now, this project here, as proposed, would go here, and it is the new District Attorney Office. Currently, they're housed in about 30,000 square feet in Building B, and we are doing some improvements to that building right now, and we're actually having to expand into a storage closet. So we're, that building is at capacity, so any growth in any department is going to cause a need for additional square footage. So this project here is estimated to be around $22 million. And just as a note, the, moving forward here, the dollars that I'm telling you about are total project cost dollars. So that is the hard and soft costs, meaning it's the design fees, the project management, all of that stuff, as well as what you pay the contractor to build the facility and get it up and running. The size is about...
Steve, just to quickly, just to clarify, all the way through to TI's and furnishings or not?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so fully operational, turnkey, walk-in, go-to-work?
Correct, right.
Okay, thank you.
Then, size is 36,000 square feet, which accommodates some growth over their footprint today. And then because this is a new building and it's a little bit larger, there will be some increased maintenance and utility costs, because we still own Building B. So this building, which, everything that we're moving forward in design and construction with all of our projects, we are requiring some highly energy-efficient systems, lighting, HVAC, et cetera. So we are really trying to reduce our operational costs as much as possible, and these are estimates at this time. And the alternative to this project is obviously, you have to create some other square footage elsewhere, which can be a challenge for interacting between offices or divisions or what have you. And I'll let District Attorney Scott Owens handle any further details on this.
Never thought I'd be the District Attorney asking for building after building after building. This one surprised me a little bit. I didn't know this one was going to come up until I saw it in the memo. I'm going to have to speak a little bit from legend and lore, because a lot of this, Building A started way before I even came into management. The original build-out on the San Tucci Justice Center was designed, I would note that that's the jail down there, not the District Attorney Office.
Right.
Originally, we moved into Building B in 2009 and moved most of our staff in there at that time. We still maintained a juvenile unit up in Auburn and an attorney and a half and support staff up in Tahoe at Burton Creek. The idea, as I was told, as I was coming into management, most of this stuff was done before I came into management, was the idea that Building A, there's a reason why it's called Building B, Building A was going to be next up, and that was going to be the location for it, and that we would be in Building B for about five years as the county recovered some costs from other building being done, and then they were going to be putting in Building A. Well, the Great Recession hit, and Building A got scrapped, and we stayed in Building B. You know, as far as how Building B's worked, my understanding is originally Building B was designed to be what I call, I don't know if they called it back then, a defendant's services building, where individuals, defendants or probationers would come out of the courthouse, and everything that they needed was going to be at Building B, with the idea of lessening for them the places that they have to respond to, the meetings that they have to set up, with the idea that maybe we could get them to report to the probation officer, or maybe we could get them to report to their attorney and keep them on the right path to successfully completing probation, and maybe even run some programs out of there. That was my understanding for what Building B was originally designed to be. We settled in there with the assessor's office on the top floor. I think the assessor's office had 1,500 square feet. They outgrew their 1,500 square feet, we outgrew our area, we absorbed their 1,500 square feet, and have used it up through the years. And in the meantime, they move, have moved downstairs, where I think they've just about used that area. You'd have to ask Ms. Spears about that. But basically, we've used up the top of Building B. The first I saw it really come to life was a few years ago. Ms. Rigan and I had some conversations, because they were looking for a place for the Public Defender's Office to land, with the idea that maybe we got back to the idea that it was a defendant's services building. This was several years ago. I mean, it seemed like a good idea from that perspective. As far as, and to me, still does, it kind of came to life at that point. I know at that point in time, I had some conversations with Marshall Hopper, Chief Probation Officer Hopper. He should probably be up here standing with me, because he can't walk through my office without figuring where he's going to hang stuff, because he needs the space upstairs. And he's made it clear to me that if we ever move out, he wants that location, because they've grown so much since 2010 because of AB 109 and some of the programming that they're running downstairs. From a security standpoint, it absolutely makes sense. It's, you'll note to the left, I think this is an old picture, but this, that area there is, to the left of Building B is now, there's a fence in that area. And there's a good reason for that fence, because you've got, you've got folks that have been convicted of heinous crimes parking right next to county employees who convicted them. And we had some incidents in the parking lot, we had some incidents in the building. It's gotten a lot better since the fenced-in area, but at the end of the day, we're what doesn't fit in Building B. And we've still got staff carrying crates, sometimes multiple crates of files, next door to the courthouse. You've got county staff showing up early to get prepared for court and finding people sleeping, you know, along the way, you know, at some point, sleeping inside the building. We've had staff followed up with cell phones while they're carrying crates. We've had doors, you know, not allowed into doors because someone's blocking the way because, you know, it's a defendant and this is the enemy, because they're the ones that put them there. So we have certainly had some security issues with Building B. You know, that said, I am glad to see it still on the, still on the agenda, I guess, so to speak, even if, as a tier three. I agree with the recommendations of tier three. My own, Scott Owens's personal thoughts are, I know they're looking for an area that houses Sheriff's Department. What we did in Auburn has worked out pretty good with the Justice Center. Why not consider putting the substation along with the DA's office in one building down there? More importantly, I think that, you know, we need a community room in South County where we can have all-staff meetings, where you can have town hall meetings, where you can have the occasional board meeting, where folks from South County would not have to travel all the way up here every single time for a board meeting. And board members, and board members need office space down there that they can, that they can make themselves available to the public once in a while. And so if Scott Owens had an unlimited checkbook, that's how I would build that building. But ultimately, that's up to you. At the end of the day, I agree with it being a tier three recommendation. In comparison with the Crime Lab, there is no comparison. You know, I can and will do my job off the tailgate if I have the right tools in the parking lot, and, you know, the Crime Lab. I've done it. And I think every attorney that worked for me at one point or another has used their car for an office to prep for trial.
A bunch of pickups.
It'd be a lot cheaper. But at the end of the day, you know, while I see the value of it there, it would be of great use, it pales in comparison to the need for the Crime Lab, in my opinion. It would be nice to see the San Tucci Center finished out, and I think that that would absolutely finish the vision that they had for the San Tucci Center way back in the day.
Board members have any questions on this? I observed that if Scott Owens had an unlimited checkbook, we'd already have the Crime Lab and it would have a microbrew in it as a part of the Crime Lab.
I keep trying to spend your money, but...
So, much like with the conversation that we just had on the Crime Lab, I'd be very curious, as we analyze the need for this, to have the conversation with, whether it's public defender or an awful lot of folks that are represented, aren't represented by public defender, but private attorneys. What's the rental market these days? What kind of rental rate could we capture if more of Building B were rented out to the private sector and you've built an all-new building that was for our county needs? I mean, we've got, it appears, a little bit of land down there. If we can reduce greenhouse gas emissions by not having attorneys driving all over and they're just right there walking, then why wouldn't we? Because that's my number-one priority.
That's my understanding of what it was designed for originally, but, you know, again, that was passed down to me from my predecessor and interest.
So I'd just be curious to see if we analyze any kind of office rental rates, to see what that does in terms of offsetting existing operational costs, as well as going a little bit maybe toward helping pay for the new facility. All right. No other questions by board members? Anybody else have a question on this particular proposal or request? All right. Who's up next? We're not hearing from Scott again, right? We're done with him?
Done with me.
The unlimited checkbook guy?
Okay. We're going to shift sites. Now, this is the Placer County Government Center, or the DeWitt Campus, if you will. So a number of these, the following projects will be shown on this map here. This is the proposed master plan for the DeWitt Campus, and it has not been approved by the board yet, so I just want to kind of give a clarifier there that this is conceptual in nature, and it is proposed at this time. So what I'm going to do now is show you from the master plan image, different projects and how they would land on the PCGC site. So, moving forward. The first project here is the administration building. So this is the domes and the domes annex relocation. This shows it on the master plan, and then we go back to reality, and this is where it would sit. It's up at Bell Road, kind of the top of the hill up there. This project is adjacent to the proposed Mercy Housing Project that's underway just across First Avenue from this site. The estimated construction cost is just under $42 million in today's dollars. Size is about 64,000 to 65,000 square feet. Currently, the buildings that house the domes and the annex combined are around 44,000 to 45,000 square feet. This will accommodate future growth, and we're anticipating maintenance and utility costs to be somewhat neutral, given what I stated before, which is the much higher energy efficiency of the new construction versus the older buildings. The two buildings that are existing today were built in the mid-'60s. And an alternative to this, if the board were to decide that we are going to stay where we are indefinitely, VFA, which, if you recall, is our system for determining what improvements are needed based on the age and condition of components of buildings. So what I'll show you on all of these projects is an immediate need, and that need is to get the buildings, the current buildings, up to fair condition. the current buildings, up to fair condition per our VFA rating system. So, the immediate need here is about $2 million, primarily at the domes. The annex is in far better condition. And then, long-term, over 10 years, a need of about $17.5 million.
Steve, can I ask you a question on that? So, the long-term need, the 10-year need of $17.5 million, is that something that would be separate from the maintenance and utility costs over the 10 years, or do those costs get rolled into that $17.5?
Separate items. Maintenance and utilities...
So that's above and beyond just the standard maintenance and utilities?
Correct. These are replacements as opposed to, you know, filter changes, you know, that kind of work. This is, you know, new HVAC, replacing lighting, a new roof, new carpet, that sort of thing. And what the determination is based on time. So sometimes a building may be to such an age that it, you'll have a spike of expenses. For instance, the main jail down at Santucci...
Oh, I have a 30-year-old house on Donner Summit. I'm aware of spikes and, yeah.
So when you have to re-roof something like that, the cost is, you know, enormous. So...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do we have any idea what the costs of the domes are for maintenance, everyday maintenance? I mean, I see someone in there all the time fixing the air conditioner or the heater, and one room's cold and one room's hot. Is there any, have we ever really taken a hard look at how much that costs?
Yes.
We could probably lay off about five maintenance people. I'm not suggesting that. I just want to point that out.
Right. Right now, we are with the domes and many of the other older buildings. We are, until we have put this VFA system into place, we were just very responsive to whatever went wrong. So, you know, that run-to-failure type of mode as opposed to the, all right, we need to plan it out. So, what you're seeing and what we're grateful for is when you all allotted an increase in the amount of money available for maintenance and replacement of systems from the past year. That was increased by $2 million, which was very helpful. So we do have the data, and it's based on, you know, work orders and whatnot. We do have that data. It's, in many cases, it's somewhat skewed because there are buildings, particularly at the DeWitt campus, that are in a holding pattern. In other words, are we going to keep this indefinitely? Because if so, you know, in two or three years, we're scheduled to replace the roof, for instance, but we're holding off. And you can, I know you've seen the condition of a lot of the buildings there. Certainly, HVAC is one of the most important things that we try to maintain. And I know, and I'm looking to my right for these two gentlemen to acknowledge that the temperature fluctuations have improved dramatically over the past many months due to some work that was done down there.
I would...
They're nodding. They're nodding.
I'd agree.
I'd say the answer is it depends on if you like big fluctuations or if you want to have to be stable.
I want to touch on two areas here because I think Steve alluded to kind of the, really the deferred maintenance on the building. But there's really an operational component here that hasn't been addressed. And that's, we do not have any space left in this building. There is no place to put any individuals here. And again, I'm looking 10 and 20 and 30 years down the road. I'm not looking at the current capacity. But we're, you know, and I think Karen could probably attest to this too. The county council's office has no space to accommodate any potential for growth. We also have some serious ADA deficiencies in that building. There is a request potentially on the 26th to be brought forward to you for a very sizable amount to do some ADA improvements on the building, of which, as Steve alluded to, we've held off on some things because we'd like to get just some clarity about, is that the right investment to make? You know, I think there's, you know, I've experienced some annual flooding that goes on. I think there's some other offices that have that unfortunate aspect. There's also some asbestos issues. So even if we were doing some remodeling the building, it's fairly expensive to do that, as many of you attest to. I wanted to touch on the second piece, though, and this is really a conversation. If you wanted to put up the slide for me. As we look at, and this is a quick overview of the domes itself.
Yeah, domes are real.
So this is a good visual representation. Obviously, that's the domes, and next to the right is the annex building. The opportunity for this is really a good redevelopment opportunity. I've had some initial conversations with the city of Auburn. They'd like to discuss not, you know, I think the conversation's really about the future of the domes, but I'm talking about really the annex. Between the annex and the land that's next to it, which is really our parking lot, there is a tremendous opportunity to address potentially some housing issues. You know, we have just to the, I guess, a little to the north of that, you see the transit stop there. There are some really good opportunities if we're really talking about a redevelopment in this area. This property in and of itself lends itself to that. Just to the left and just out of the view is the library. We have a beautiful amphitheater area that also could be really repurposed very well. So, I just want to touch on that because I think there are two aspects to this. One is about operational needs, and again, looking long-term. But the other is, this is a tremendous redevelopment potential. It's also been on the list since '93, and it is part of the effort as some of the money, and we'd be coming back again with a financing plan, some money attributed to our capital facilities fees directly was attributed to operations within that building alone and accommodating the growth potential that took place back at that time. So, I don't know if, Dave, you want to touch anything more on this, but I wanted to share really the operational piece. We talked on the financial components. But there is a redevelopment opportunity here as well that I think the city of Auburn also recognizes that this is something that could be a good collaborative project to work on.
Yeah. And if I can actually follow up on that, it's something that I've been talking about with the city leaders at Auburn for a couple of years. The fact that while there is this sort of visceral and passionate desire for the county to stay within the city of Auburn, kind of representational of, you know, being truly located within the county seat, there's probably better opportunities both for the county and the city for redevelopment on this property. And a number of the city council people that I've spoken with over the years have been very interested in following up on any opportunity that might arise, understanding that it may never arise. My board may decide that we love the dome so much, we never want to leave. I find that hard to believe, but, you know, hey, it's possible. I've seen weirder decisions made. So, I think there's some real and significant opportunities there for the city, particularly with the new state focus on making sure that cities specifically are meeting their RENA numbers. I think there's some real opportunities for the city. And I would, you know, once I've moved on to my new position, I would really encourage us to flesh those conversations out with the city leaders in Auburn to see how it would benefit all of us.
Yeah. The layout of both of the buildings is really flexible. The domes are very limiting in, when you want to create individual spaces inside because, you know, there aren't any 90-degree walls, et cetera. But the, on the positive side, though, there's a large span, you know, of unsupported space there that would have flexibility, you know, on the interior for reconfiguring that. And then the annex itself is also, you know, large-span spaces. It's kind of the shape of a dormitory or apartment, you know, type configuration the annex is, which would lend itself to being potential for housing pretty efficiently, I think.
The only thing I may add very quickly to the maintenance, as well as the major rehabilitation costs, is also the potential need for renovation costs as well, and that really hasn't been discussed yet. You know, we are completely tapped out of room. We actually were considering hiring an intern to help with some peak workload things. We literally just have nowhere to park them right now. We did look at about a year and a half ago, the potential to repurpose CEO 1 for a potential cubicle farm, essentially. We thought it would be in the, you know, low six figures. We started digging, found out it was $2 million plus, and stopped digging at that point. And that's due to various complexities relative to the building. So, if we are to stay in that building for a while, it's not just bringing it up to par to make it, you know, that fair condition we're looking for, but we would also have to look at renovating the interior of it to make more space, frankly.
Or adding another dome.
I would not recommend that myself.
You're relieved.
I have a, on the $17.5 million over 10 years, this is an internal rate of return present value calculation. Thought, in a perfect world, would that be skewed towards the front or equally over 10 years for budgeting purposes or what?
There is a chart that we had put together that indicates those expenses, and it varies. You know, it varies from, you know, tens of thousands in some years to hundreds of thousands to over a million in other years. And that's just triggered by that VFA exercise of when the lifespan of a system...
But it's most of that in the first, like, five years, or is it spread pretty equally over 10, or?
Attachment B, page seven, has at least the raw output from that VFA database that we have. You know, Facilities does a great job of taking that raw output and really scrubbing it for absolute need. I think, you know, when Steve was presenting to the board a few weeks ago, he talked about, you know, something that VFA said needed to be replaced in the fab building, and upon further review, found that that piece of equipment was never even hooked up 20 years prior when it was new. So we do have to take that, you know, extra look at things to make sure that it makes sense. But this is the raw output, and we think it's at least close.
Okay. Thanks.
And while I recognize the, kind of the emotional attachment to being within the city and these other things that we think we might be able to repurpose it for, I think we have an obligation to look at every asset we have and what's the potential highest and best use. And so I wouldn't want to, if we're looking at taking functions currently performed here, relocating them to the DeWitt Center, I wouldn't want to presuppose what is the appropriate use for that. I'd want the market to tell us what's the appropriate use for that. And again, maximizing our return on that asset, minimizing our obligation and upfront costs on the other assets of a DeWitt. So, ain't nothing there anybody's going to want. Call in the strike team now. Obliterate it. Let's move on. Oh, we were saving discussion for the end. I'm sorry.
Yeah. And just to be clear, there is definitely some maybe sentimental, but certainly expressed perspective from some of the city council folks that they would like to see the domes remain if it became their asset. It would be repurposed for something very different than what it's currently used for. But again, I think beyond just the pressures of the market, there are other pressures that play into the decision about what happens to that piece of property in the future. Again, the focus on housing at the state level and the obligations for both cities and counties. I think while it may not be the highest and best use of the property from an economic standpoint, it may be from a regulatory standpoint.
Absolutely. And that has a value. I concur. Anyone else at this point? Okay. Are we done with this particular conversation and we're moving on to a different building at this point? Okay. Just one observation. We're going to take a quick break. Mr. Holmes got a head start on us. But we're going to take a five, actually, we'll take a 10-minute break and then reconvene. But one other observation is, we're talking about the DeWitt Center in that slide that you had up there where you superimposed the administration building. Again, getting back to the comment that I just made, to the extent that we've identified what needs we have for DeWitt, we, for instance, think we need 67,000 square feet of administrative space at DeWitt for current purposes being conducted or current uses being conducted at Fullwiler. We know that we need HHS. We know that we have surplus land. I would not want for us to presuppose that that is the best location right there on Bell Road. That might be a prime piece for a medical office complex that the private sector comes in and wants to build, and we maximize the revenue, and heaven forbid, we have to drive in a block and a half to the administrative building off of Bell Road because the private sector said, "This is a really valuable piece of property right here, and we're willing to pay this for it here. But if we've got to drive to the internal because you have no frontage and all the rest, it's not worth quite as much to us." So, I'd like us more to be talking in terms of what is the need and estimated cost as opposed to, "And we think this should go here."
Right.
Because we might find a private sector partner that comes along and says, "Well, guys, actually, if we do this, this, and this, we're going to drive down your infrastructure costs because the private sector getting to there is going to pay for that, and then we just have to run off from here," those kinds of things.
Right. And as you are very aware, we are preparing an RFQ where we're looking at an opportunity to work with the private sector on this particular piece of property and to look at highest, best use, you know, what the needs are for North Auburn, as well as the county's needs there, too. So, we will be doing that in anticipation of a potential approval of the master plan, and then we'll move forward with that process.
That's great. Any other thoughts or questions? Okay. I am showing...
I'm just going to jump in quickly because I want to key off what you said.
Okay.
There is a perception that exists out there that we have picked, as Kirk says, specific spots and specific winners and losers in any redevelopment of the Placer County Government Center. One of the issues that comes up, and you're aware of it, so I'm not raising anything out of the blue here, is, you know, what happens to the old theater. And I think it's important to note that this whole redevelopment vision for the government center does not rule in or rule out the theater continuing to exist in its...
Correct.
...current location. If someone came to us, private developer, and said, "I have this amazing idea for a brew pub and theater," we'd all probably say yes because we like both those things.
Be competing with Scott's Brew Pub and his crime lab.
Yeah. Yeah. But I think it's just important to note, for the record, that no decision has been made about any specific structures or specific locations for potential new structures out there.
Correct.
All right. Seeing no other comments, I'm showing right about 12:59. Why don't we just take five? We'll come back at about 1:05. People can stretch their legs, use restrooms, and then we'll start back up again. Are we going back to Steve? Is it...
Yes.
All right. Well, Steve's not here, so we're going to go ahead. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, that's right. We fired him in the last, when he said about building another dome. That was...
He was relieved.
Steve's calling out his desk right now.
Get in my box. Okay. All right. Back to our DeWitt campus. The master plan. Okay, this project is the Ag Farm Advisor, new building. And we'll superimpose the image from the master plan back down here. This project, as you can see, is planned, at least in the master plan diagram, to be a location of 208 to 210, those buildings which house facilities, building maintenance, museums in that space, and some of the park staff, too. So, currently, they are in Building 306, which is directly below the image I show you here. That building is probably the least improved building on the entire DeWitt campus.
That's saying something. That's not a record you won't...
And that is saying something, yes. So, it's in dire need of improvements. And this facility...
Demolition?
Right. This facility would replace that and would provide for significantly larger space as the Ag and Farm Advisor, their role, and I'll let Josh Hunzey... the Ag and Farm Advisor, their, their role, and I'll let Josh Hunsinger in a second talk about this, their, their role has evolved dramatically and so their need for space for storing items as well as doing additional activities that the state has mandated on them is pretty immense. So the other alternative to that is if they were to stay where they are, there are some significant improvements on building 306, where they are now, that are needed in addition to additional space that they need for both storage and for, for housing people and programs. So I'll let Josh discuss this, this project here.
Good afternoon, let's see. Good afternoon, Josh Hunsinger, Placer County Agricultural Commissioner. Thank you, Steve, for that introduction. So yeah, so the Agriculture Department and the Farm Advisor currently share building 306. Additionally, the very end of building 307, I don't know if you can highlight that, Steve, so we also, our shop and laboratory space is the end of that, which is immediately adjacent to the existing county morgue. And so those, those buildings, as Steve mentioned, are in fairly poor condition. The Farm Advisor side has been updated over time a little bit, but the Agriculture Department's side of the building has not been touched and I think our flooring contractor recognized the linoleum as at least forty years old in there, so that, so it hasn't been touched in a while. So recognizing that the master plan calls out building C as something that would land on top of existing occupied buildings on the DeWitt campus there, what, what we're looking to in the short term and actually included in this budget is approximately $250,000 worth of, I don't know, I don't want to call them Band-Aids, but things to freshen up the building and keep it in a, in a condition where it's, can be occupied by employees and serve the public for, for the next five-plus year window, to buy us that time to look at the longer-term solutions. So on the Farm Advisor's side, we're investing about $40,000 to bait mold and espesos and make the bathroom usable. And then on the Ag Department's side, we're doing some flooring and paint and some new cubicles. That funding was just approved in the, the mid-year budget revision that came before you a couple of weeks ago. So that's, that's, I think, the short-term plan for the Ag Department to, to, in the next, in this current fiscal year. And over the next couple of fiscal years, as the sheriff moves out of the morgue, current morgue space, we're, Facilities, I think, was a little surprised to see me raise my hand and ask for that space. To continue and occupy a little bit more of building 307 slash 308, to perhaps gut out the, that morgue space, put in a couple of large roller doors and gain some additional shop space. We have probably a quarter million dollars worth of expensive weights and measures testing equipment, which is out in the weather right now that I'd really like to get covered. And so just adding another approximately 3,000 square feet of shop and storage space to the 1,400 feet we currently have. Fixing up 306 and 307 in that manner, like I said, will buy us kind of that short-term window to see what other, as we're calling, kind of the domino effect of different projects around DeWitt that may or may not happen to, buy us that time to really see what evolves there. But in the long-term, you know, this is very preliminary as far as, you know, 22,000 square feet and the cost and stuff. I think this is just a conceptual idea. That's not just office space for us, but would also be that shop and laboratory and storage space that both the Farm Advisor and, and the Ag Department need to support our operations as well.
No questions on this item? Okay.
Moving forward, okay. The next project is the Corporation Yard. As, as shown here, the bottom right is the area that functions primarily as our Corporation Yard with a number of exceptions. There are other functions that occur there. We have a homeless shelter, we have an area where the community comes and gets bus passes. So it's, it's not exclusively, exclusively an area for county staff to operate in, which poses risks, you know, both injuries, but there's also theft and so forth that occurs. This project would more clearly define this Corporation Yard. It would fence it and make it a, really a county-only access area with the exception of a, of a front counter, if you will, that can still maintain that service of providing bus passes, other needs that the, the public may have. But then it also relocates some of the functions that really don't belong positioned in the Corporation Yard. So you see up here on the left, K1, that is the sheriff's dive unit being relocated. And then some of the other buildings that are located down here that would be new include a Parks and Grounds building, a Utilities building, a tire barn, that admin kind of front door building with a training room and then a wash rack for our fleet folks. So this, this project, the, let me just show you, here's where it would land. It also includes, all of these buildings here are original to the development of the DeWitt campus. Those are, are being retained and we see those as being retained indefinitely. They are all in structurally good condition. They are primarily slab-on-grade, which is a much longer-term construction. So basically what we're looking at doing is just relocating some of the functions out of the Corporation Yard and then adding some needed functions within it and then defining it and creating fences and gates around it. The cost for this is estimated at about $13 million. Most of the buildings that are identified here are very small. So there would be, because some of them are new buildings, there would be an increase in the maintenance and utilities costs. And the alternative to this is to basically continue functioning as, as we are now. So I don't think we have anyone here to, to support or give any additional information. If so, now's your chance. Any questions?
Board members, Professor Holmes.
How big is this proposed tire barn?
The tire barn is a little under 4,000 square feet.
So we stock, stock tires in the tire barn? I mean, why don't we just go to the, where we're contracted with and buy the tires?
But I think that there's more to it than just, just the housing of the tires. You know, there's the, the maintenance, replacement, you know, et cetera.
So they'd be replacing the tires on the vehicles at the tire barn, is that, is that what you're saying?
I believe that's the, the intent and that's what drove the square footage. It's not, it's more than just the
You're not going to be just be storing tires.
That would be a lot of tires.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I would remind my colleague that the Corporation Yard is recommended as a tier-three project, so you'll have plenty of time to investigate the utilization of the Michelins over there and figure out just
Run flat.
What's the appropriate number of square footage is that's going to be required.
Steve, would this, would this include a, the existing gassing facility, fuel, fueling facility?
That is right
Right there.
There.
So that would remain outside the footprint or within the footprint?
That would be inside the footprint of the Corporation Yard, since it's only serving county.
So it would be, it would become a gated access?
It would either, and we're not worked out to that level of detail, it would be considered part of the Corporation Yard, whether, due to the convenience of staff members who need to fill up a, you know, a county car to go to a meeting, it may make sense that it remains as it is. Or it could be gated with a fobbed access just for security reasons, but that level of detail isn't worked out yet.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other questions by board members or anybody else on the Corporation Yard item?
All right.
Then we're moving on.
Moving on. This project is the Fab Annex. It's in addition to the Finance Administration Building and I think probably one of the first questions here, it'll be shown there on the existing site, one of the first questions is, why is it so large? It, in addition to handling the expansion of the existing departments that are inside the Fab and they're now at capacity within that facility too, it also relocates some of the functions that are down in the Corporation Yard, such as IT, telecom and central services. So printing, shipping, receiving, et cetera, all of those operations would be proposed to be up here outside of that Corporation Yard. The alternative to this, this is the, the challenge that we have at the Fab, is no place to grow within its walls. And so we'll have to look creatively at either things that may move out of there or additional space that would accommodate added growth as needed. That's, that's something that we're, we're in the, kind of in the background here, we're, we're looking at some alternatives to this. Any questions? Dieter, do you want to chime in on this at all?
I think the only thing to really add is that, that IT is spread out throughout five different locations on the campus and just for synergy purposes, there's some value obviously in that. I know we've shrunk workspace sizes to accommodate growth in our department, but that also has a negative effect on, on folks. So that'd probably be the, the few items that I'd like to throw in there.
Dieter, would this, would this envision new employees, additional employees coming in or would it be pretty much status quo in terms of operating expenses?
You know, I don't think that's been taken into consideration yet, at least we haven't been asked that. I think it really is just looking at the workspaces that we do have, the warehouse spaces that we, we require, which would be incorporated into that. So I don't think there's been a discussion about growth in, significant growth in our department, but I think that like in, you know, if we're looking for efficiencies within the county, the growth in IT is going to be there. You know, either we're doing in-house or it's going to be outsourced at one point, pieces of it. So I don't know that answer, but again, the goal was to bring us together into a common workspace and be able to collaborate and support our customers better.
Any other board members have any questions?
Anyone that's in, in the existing Fab building that has additional insight? No, okay.
That, that you want to share? The only thing that I would, speaking on behalf of somebody that's in that building who didn't want to share, when you think about the functions of, that are, that are housed up there, when you talk about our auditor controller and our assessor and tax collector and, those are primarily internally focused. We have somebody sitting in the corner over there whose entire mission is almost all exclusively externally focused. Record, record, register our voters, almost 100% focused on serving folks over a counter. Is this really the best long-term location for them as opposed to somewhere in South Placer?
That's a good question, I know.
When, you know, we all know where our population is and everybody that wants to record any document or get their marriage license or get their passport or, God forbid, run for office, has to haul ourselves all the way up here, you know, for this. So as we look at the long-term needs of this facility and, and that annex in particular, might be looking at that internal focus versus external focus to say, is this really the right place for them?
That's, that's a good point additionally.
And given the domes.
Yeah, yeah.
Wait a second.
And I'm just going to advocate for the residents of the fifth district and the far-flung eastern portions of the county that I'm mindful of considerations that would make those services more remote to that portion of the population.
Good point, right, okay. Onward. Okay, this is the new HHS building. This one is shown here in the proposed master plan and this, this location is actually, you'll see these three buildings right here that are existing DeWitt buildings. You'll see that the footprint of the proposed new HHS building is right on top of, of those three buildings. This, the location for this building is actually quite unique and appropriate in that while this is under construction, those inhabitants in those three buildings could move up in the other 100 wing buildings here temporarily while the new building is being built. And when this building would come online, there's actually a, a real domino effect affecting multiple departments of what could actually happen because a number of people that are currently housed in the CDRC building would then move into the new HHS facility. That would then free up people in other buildings to go, to backfill into the CDRC building. It might also make available space here, which could help accommodate the Ag and Farm Advisor needs for some period into the future. Another benefit is that this, this would, other than people that could be housed here in buildings 208 through 210, this would remove everyone from a decaying building, you know, other than the, the buildings that we are keeping and investing in down here, all of, of these buildings would be vacated of county staff. So that's the, kind of the positive ripple effect of this project. Total cost is roughly $90 million. It's, as you are aware, it's a project that has been programmed. We do have a, a program which identifies approximately 136,000 square feet. It consolidates all of the HHS, HHS staff and programs that serve this foothills area as well as the administrative functions of HHS as a whole. They are currently in multiple buildings as well as leased facilities. And so this, this project is, is really one that the condition and what we do on a lot of the other buildings on this campus are contingent on a, a timeline for when this project would move forward because there's improvements, roofing, ADA, et cetera, that, that are needed if this project was to, to, you know, be delayed for any significant period of time. You can see the, the immediate need, year one, in order to get, like I said, to that fair condition, is about $6.6 million. It's, it's tremendous. And over the long haul, it's north of $40 million, plus the ongoing lease costs that we have. And I know Jeff Brown is here and he probably has some more detailed insight that he can give to this.
Well, good afternoon, Chair Yule, members of the board, Jeff Brown, your Health and Human Services Director. Does this work? Nope, let's try this one.
There's a button on the front there.
I hit the button. Does that work? No. And I think we have a presentation. So I, I'm just going to go over four slides with you to highlight a few, a few items of detail regarding the project, but you can see here that we occupy 109,000 square feet between the DeWitt barracks, our CSOC facilities at Interplis Way where we lease space and also at Lyons Plaza. We also have space in the CDRC and that really relates to the domino effect. If we vacated the CDRC, it would create more opportunities for other departments to move into. I like the word Steve used, decay. I thought Josh was being very polite, but I'll just say that these barracks are over 70 years old, they're past their useful life, they're barracks are over 70 years old. They're past their useful life. They're functionally obsolete. And I have to say, year to year, they get worse. You know, we end up with deteriorating systems. In the last year, we had a deteriorating water system issue. We have lead paint. We deal with leak issues. We deal with mold issues. And so, they just continue year after year. How about the next slide, please? So, again, this is another project that was in the grand 1993 master plan as a priority. So, just to refresh, 26 years ago. They say patience is a virtue. And so, this is one of those projects that has really tried to maintain its patience. And then, Steve mentioned that the estimated need from our programming with the architects, Dreyfus and Blackford, estimated 136,000 feet to replace all of these buildings. Next slide. So, in addition to the domino effect, which creates some advantages, you know, currently, Division Services are spread over a number of buildings in four different areas of Auburn, and it makes it challenging for residents to access integrated services. So, what we're really looking for here is efficiencies of providing one-stop, comprehensive, integrated services with an integrated reception staff, one lobby for all of our services. Another part that's important about this building is it will not require any increase in staffing or operational expenses. I'm going to talk a little bit about leveraging with the next slide. New common areas would be able to be shared by all departments at the Government Center. It would create an upgraded infrastructure asset that ultimately could be used by any department over time. So, once this building is completely expensed out. And then, it would allow for the removal of the existing substandard barracks and jumpstart the development of the DeWitt Government Center. And then, finally, I note that this would certainly be an aid, along with all the buildings, for recruitment and retention of Placer County staff. And then, the last slide, could we move to? So, cost, financing readiness. So, the rough estimate of this is about $90 million. The one thing I'll say is, we are committed to working with the CEO and with facilities to reduce that price tag to a lesser amount. And so, we'll never know until we jump in on that. But I know there's a number of ways this building could be built, and we're certainly flexible to work in with whoever comes to the table that can make some suggestions about how to make this an efficient and cost-effective program. I will say, this is one of only a few projects that can leverage any significant amount of external funding. So, we've done a number of estimates, and we estimate we should be able to pay for the full cost of the building through depreciation. So, that's estimated at $1.8 million a year. If there's debt financing that would be required for this building, we don't have the ability to absorb all of the debt financing. But we can certainly absorb the depreciation over time. And then, the last step really is, this is the most ready-to-go of all the projects being considered. Programming has already been completed. That was an investment of your board of $350,000 with Dreyfus and Blackford. And the environmental clearance is almost complete. So, we're really ready for that next step of design criteria development.
Board members, comments or questions? I'm not seeing any, but I would indicate that this is another example, if you want to go back to the picture of the campus. When we look at the location of this, you know, you're talking about, the two first-tier buildings that we're talking about are the Administration Building and this building. Fairly good distance between the two of them, fairly long infrastructure runs. We know that the infrastructure's going to have to obviously be oversized ultimately for development of the area. So, this is, again, where I think, looking at this from the standpoint of what is the most efficient way to get these things built, bring them to market, that space might not be the best space. I mean, the, the other problem with that space is obviously, you're now requiring two moves of the HHS operation, as opposed to a building being built somewhere else and one move of the HHS operation. So, again, just reminding that it'll be fun to get somebody else's eyes on this to say, if we couple these together, then the county's cost of infrastructure goes down because you've minimized, I mean, a fairly significant run to get infrastructure in from off of Bell or what have you, if, just depending on where it locates. So, Roger Holmes?
No, were you suggesting maybe, maybe I wasn't paying attention. Were you suggesting...
That happens when I talk. You do that a lot.
Yeah, well.
He's not doing it.
You learn from Robert.
Yeah, I'm pretty good at it. Now, I forgot what I was going to add.
My boy worked.
Are you done?
I am, for now.
Are you suggesting that we combine the Admin Center with the HHS building?
What I, what I'm saying is, I look at the master plan that's been in front of us a couple of times, and rather than, my preference would have been, rather than us even showing buildings on a map, we simply identified the need out there, and how much surplus ground we think we have based on our need for square footage and parking. And, and then just say to the marketplace, okay, somebody design us a center and tell us what you think, you know, is the best way to deliver this into the market. And whether that's they're next door to each other, they're cohabitating, who knows? But I just, I look at this, the very first thing I think is, why move the operation twice?
Yeah.
Do I build this right on the footprint where they're at?
And save.
And then, I look at where, you know, knowing, obviously, we don't have it here superimposed where that Administration Center was supposed to be, up off of Bell Road. But that's a pretty significant run. And we know, obviously, we've got some drunk line infrastructure in Bell Road. We've got some decrepit infrastructure in DeWitt. So, anything that's going to be a new building in DeWitt, I don't know where we're tying into in order to get proper fire flows and all the rest. I don't know if it's just off of Fab, or if we have, oh, we're coming in from there. So, again, it's, it's those kinds of things. And I think that, you know, getting a good, honest perspective from the marketplace to say, if you design it this way, we're going to create efficiencies and all that good stuff.
I think that's probably one of the, the challenges with doing a, a master plan, to master plan the entire site versus decision-making on individual projects. So, that clearly, you're, you're right. You, optimally, you don't want to move people twice, costs, inconvenience, et cetera, inefficiencies. And then, you know, balancing that with, okay, what's, what's the best overall picture over time of, of what this campus should look like? That's, that's the challenge, I think.
Yeah, I have no objection to that. The only concern I have is, we need to get those people that work in those crappy buildings out of there as soon as possible.
I agree.
A point, which I appreciate, which is looking at a master plan. And it probably comes back to when we discuss what our priorities are and what we look as far as financing. Because if you can build two buildings at one time, right, with one, one developer, then we save a lot of dollars. And the question is, how do we end up financing that, right? So, we have to have that conversation. But there are some opportunities where we could save a lot of money doing a lot of this at once, if we're willing to do financing, or bonding, or what have you, which is a conversation we need to have.
And I think that there, if, if the board gives some direction, or asks us to pursue something a little further with, with more information, we over here have been meeting quite a bit. And, and we have thoughts and ideas where we may be able to create some greater efficiencies. And, you know, what, what we have here is sort of tunnel vision, you know, this is a, a specific project, you know? And if we, if we have a direction and a little bit of a roadmap, then I think we can say, you know what, this project, let's analyze the program for it. We may be able to pick up some efficiency by sharing this over here, for instance, these spaces, so that we can be as efficient as possible. And as Jeff Brown had said, you know, our goal is to deliver these as cost-effectively as possible. And this building, as, as he stated, is one that is, it's basically an office building, and it is incredibly versatile in what it can be, what it can become, the flexibility within the, its walls.
So, speaking to that question of flexibility, which I haven't brought up yet, but I think it's a, somebody else mentioned it to me. I think it's a point well taken, that is, as our workforce changes, as we have younger people who work differently, as we are looking at, you know, people who telecommute, or people like to work in a coffee shop, or they're out on the road, or, you know, as we look at these facilities, we really ought to look at sharing space, making sure there's coworking spaces, office sharing. Not everybody needs four walls to work in. Because I think, and I don't know how much work you've done with that on these projects, but, you know, I, I look at this, and I go, we don't need Taj Mahal for any of these projects. And you can get a good quality building, but build in some flexibility, so that you're not spending millions of dollars redoing TIs. And I think that's really important, though. We make sure these buildings work so that you can move things around, and do some co-sharing of space, et cetera.
Right. Totally agree. And, and we have done that in, in that this building is programmed looking out, you know, two decades. And as the county grows, and then the, the needs expand, how do we efficiently grow into that space, you know, without revamping, throwing away things that we've, we've spent money on? So, that, that has been looked at, at the programming level for this project. So, totally, totally agree.
Just one comment, one question. You said the most cost-effectively as possible, and I know we've talked, you know, you've thought about this, but maybe for a little therapy or insurance, you know, in that we're doing the whole master plan, I think we also want to look at, you know, something's somewhat more expensive, but there's some synergism, as even relates to the aesthetics of things like enhancing our business opportunities, like Kirk has referred to with potential realty sites, you know, I just don't want us to focus on, here's how we're going to get this stuff to you as cheaply as possible. Then the other question is, do you have a, what, I'm sure you do, but what is the population build-out number that you're using to calculate what our ultimate facilities needs are going to be on the campus? County population?
I don't, I don't have the number in, in my head.
Well, somebody could get that for me.
Sure.
I'd like to have that, yeah, just for reconciled against other things we've been working on.
Any other questions or comments?
You mean county working population, or?
Yeah, the county, what would the county?
Workforce.
I know we had.
And then, we've talked a lot about looking at the DeWitt facility, particularly in light of our surplus properties, under the notion that we will never need those properties for county use. And I guess you could say, maybe over the useful life of a building, so after 50 years, you could maybe tear one down and still use them. But I think the smarter thing is to look at a likely build-out in population of the county, and, because the countywide services, plus the county services we provide. And I'm just curious just what that population is.
And, you know, as it relates to the PCCP, because I think that'll be a build-out vision of the county also.
For, just for clarity, are, are you looking for our estimated population of county employees? Nope.
No.
Okay.
Total population.
Got it.
What do you think the build-out population of the county will be, and thus, the facilities that follow that?
Okay.
And Steve, I may have missed it, but I thought there was some tie-in to Josh's agricultural building, if the, some potential sort of tie-in, if this moves forward. Could you go over that again?
Yep, sure. So, that domino effect, if the staff that are in HHS, currently in, in the CDRC building, then move into this new facility here, some of the staff that are here in this building could move into CDRC. This also actually helps to bring departments totally together. All of public works, other than field staff, you know, and, and staff that are clearly in the corporation yard, could be housed in the CDRC building. All of facilities management staff could be housed in this building here. And then, ag and farm advisor, which are here, they could come into this facility here, only in a very preliminary phase of looking at, at the feasibility of that. And it looks doable, in addition to the current morgue that, that Josh had mentioned.
So, it would, if I understand what you're saying, then it would, if we constructed the HHS building as envisioned, it could then preclude the need for a new ag building?
It could. It would involve some investment in, in this existing building in order to accommodate the staff. And I've met with Josh and kind of looked at how many, and what do they need, cubicles versus offices, et cetera.
Yeah. So, I think, Jennifer, at whatever point we move out of Building 306, the master plan calls out a new ag building on top of that existing facilities building. And so, I think there's two potential scenarios. One is, we occupy the existing building, so when, when those staff move to CDRC and some of the other places, they would move and vacate that space. We'd move into the existing space. Or the other scenario would be to construct a new building on top of that existing building, so demolish and, and build a new building. So, in either, in either case, that's the footprint. But two different old building, new building on the same footprint.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? I don't see anybody else. Any other thoughts or questions on this? All right. Moving on.
Okay. Okay, the next one is the Museums Warehouse. You can see it over here with the letter E on it. So, the proposed location for that is directly across the street from the new Animal Services Center. It is both a museums warehouse, and it would also double up as, as warehouse base for other functions in the county. Estimated construction cost is about $8.3 million. Size is just under 20,000 square feet. Maintenance and utilities costs we're seeing as, as probably a wash versus what we're utilizing now, just based on some of the, the maintenance costs and the inefficient systems that are there. Currently, there's an immediate need for improvements of about $1 million, and then a long-term need over the next decade of about $4 million. Questions? Okay. All right. Okay. The Tahoe Justice Center. This is a, an aerial image of Burton Creek, our facility up there. This, this one probably has the most variables that we simply cannot quantify totally at this time. And I know that a lot of people in this room probably have a lot of knowledge about a lot of the other factors concerning the site, the, the sensitive environmental nature of its location, and, you know, its, its history with the grand jury, and then also just all the, the possible opportunities of, of, of what could take place, whether it's here or it's elsewhere. So, based on that, we have a range, cost range. This is anticipating purchase of a new piece of property, $50 to $60 million, 53,000 square feet, maintenance and utilities costs of about $300,000 a year. And as, as you all probably know, we, we do, the sheriff is, is having to have an agreement currently with Nevada County for housing inmates on the weekends, et cetera, because we don't have that capability at this time. And if we continue here, we continue with that relationship. There's some immediate improvement needs to the building of about $1.3 million. And then, over the next 10 years, about $6.3 million are needed.
Steve, what, or maybe you guys, what specifically would go in a Tahoe Justice Center? Obviously, we share it currently with the courts, but is there any vision to add any other partners in the criminal justice system to this?
So, currently, we have a shared use, currently, we have a shared use facility. We have the DA, the court, and then obviously, the sheriff's office. So, it's an efficient model, especially because of the location where we're at, in the basin. It makes it very convenient for delivery of services, as well as access for the public that receives those services. So, we, we would hope to continue a model that shares those same efficiencies. Clearly, there are some mechanics involved in moving forward on... are some mechanics involved in moving forward on some of those pieces. That would probably need further discussion, but we could envision a desire to continue that shared use model, perhaps even including probation within the, the justice center model as long as, as well as the DA's office and the sheriff's office as well.
So would there be some, some analysis in that of what those shared costs would also be toward that 50 to 60 million?
Well, so, I'm not precisely sure where the 50 to 60 million dollar figure came from.
Nor am I. I was going to ask that one next.
Yeah, so I anticipate, I've looked at some of the original, so going back in time, and I actually had a prepared statement, but in the interest of time, I'll probably just shoot right to the question and answer. Several boards ago, in fact, I think several different iterations of the board of supervisors have committed to and approved moving forward on a replacement building for our sheriff's office substation up there for reasons that really necessarily aren't relevant here. That stalled out, so here we are today. So the need is there. The grand jury, obviously, as mentioned previously, has called out the condition of the building pretty consistently, going back 25, perhaps even 30 years. And here we are today. But, so clearly, the building, the building is not in any kind of compliance with ADA requirements. It's, I've heard the term decaying. I heard that, some references to the D WIT buildings. So if you imagine the D WIT buildings and then imagine our Burton Creek station, very similar circumstances. We have pipes that have rotten out, spilling sewage gas into the building. We had an electrical fire in our records division. We've had water pipes crack in the parking lot requiring some, causing flooding, requiring some substantial repair work. That's just in the last year, not including all of the stuff that's done prior to me going up there five years ago. The jail, as you can see in the photograph, is clearly not to any sort of standards, modern standards. It was built in 1959. I'm not sure what sort of regulatory standards existed in 1959, but this is not safe for today's use. So currently, at the present time, we only operate it as a temporary court holding facility. We do take bookings during the day, during business hours. Otherwise, we contract with the Nevada County Sheriff's Office for use of their facility for after-hours and weekends. They also have a small facility with limited resources. If they're not able to accept an arrest D, either because they're combative, too intoxicated, or they have pre-existing medical conditions, then we end up having to transport that person to Auburn. That removes a deputy from the basin for an extended length of time, adding some weather that can be three, four, or five hours.
Or days.
Or days, yeah. A recurring theme, people are running out of spaces. I've heard that several times today. I have people, actually, their offices are in closets. We've pretty much squeezed every usable space out of that building as we possibly could. And then, of course, the building has lots of character. The very last picture is a little bit of that character. That's right outside of my, my office. It's a little utility alcove in our administrative section of the building. Clearly, we need to do a little bit more control of the character, but that is indicative of pretty much the state of the entire building. In fact, I used to joke that I had a pet bat in the closet behind my desk till I caught it. It wasn't a joke anymore. So what we would kind of envision moving forward is, some of the plans that we looked at some years ago, and we have some copies of those, we don't have the initial or the original needs assessment that apparently had been done some time back, but I do have a diagram for a building that lists a facility of roughly 25,000 square feet. Currently, the building that we're in right now is 11,000 square feet. And while I don't want to commit to a specific size without doing an actual site analysis, which, you know, a lot of what we would actually build would depend entirely upon where we're going to be building as well. One of those original plans called for a 20-bed minimum security jail. I don't necessarily envision moving forward with a 20-bed minimum security jail. Definitely a 96-hour booking facility so that we can book and house people safely and adequately during inclement weather, weekends, et cetera. However, once that 96 hours has passed, they could be transported down to Auburn, assuming that they're not going to be released. There would be increased ongoing costs associated with opening up a full-time jail as opposed to where we're operating now. However, you know, if we project forward with our Nevada County contract, which is north of, what, 447 this year, there's, we anticipate a 3% rise out of that yearly movement forward. And as I mentioned previously, they also have their own challenges. So walkie-talkie, I could keep talking for hours. My apologies.
Well, as, as you know, you and I have talked about this over the years, as I have with many of your predecessors, and Sheriff Bell and Sheriff Bonner before that. I, I see an absolute critical need to move this particular project forward. I think it's doing a disservice to PCSO, to our partners in the courts, to district attorney, and frankly, to all the folks who have to go through this facility to keep doing what we've been doing. But for full disclosure and transparency, if this is going to move forward, I need the sheriff's department to actually prioritize this. Because in all the conversations I have, it's a priority, but when it comes to the budget request and actually getting out there, it seems to fall down the list of budget priorities on the sheriff's office. So I need you guys to recommit to working with the rest of the county to move this forward, because we've got to make a change. I'm putting it on you, because I'm leaving in two weeks.
Yes, ma'am, I guess I can speak to that. I mean, I can put in a $50 million budget request. I, we try to keep, we try to keep it below $5 million with our supplementals. So I, I mean, I, it is a priority for us. I will tell you, it's a priority for us. Last year when we did this, we went around last time, the number one priority for the sheriff's office was the Coroner Facility. Number two was Burton Creek. Some stuff got onto the list ahead of that that was really, I won't call them sheriff priorities, but when we committed to doing 863 and 844 down South Placer, Housing Unit 3 had to be retrofitted. That wasn't necessarily a sheriff priority. Our priority was the Coroner Facility and Burton Creek. So I.
That's, that's good to hear.
It, and it's always been that way. So I, if you talk to Sheriff Bell and other sheriff Woo, those have always been our priorities. But when you get outside of that scope and you look at what we did with 863 and 844 to build the facilities down in South Placer, again, those weren't necessarily sheriff's office priorities. They were more of a criminal justice priority. But if you, if you classify what we do within our budget, absolutely over the last five, 10, 15 years, it has been Coroner Facility and Burton Creek.
My point is merely, we need to hear that from you guys more routinely and more directly, because I think that messaging gets lost in a lot of the other conversations we have around other projects, which seem to rise up the priority list.
And again, I would concur. I mean, the last time we went through this, I, I think that, that Tahoe substation was on the list, but it didn't make the top of the, the top tiers when we went through them. Again, because the Coroner Facility was there, and then what got pushed up the list, I won't say unbeknownst to us, but not within our priorities, were the funding around 863, 844, and the retrofit of Housing Unit 3. Again, not sheriff's office priorities, but Burton Creek certainly was on the list. It just didn't make the top, the top cut.
Keep pushing.
Well, and 863 and 844 are those opportunities that, that the state, you know, passes a, you know, a bond and, and the law goes into effect, and, and they're funding the majority of those projects. So you don't want to, to not do them. You don't want to take advantage of other people's money.
I'm suggesting we really keep our eye on the ball.
Oh, yeah, totally agree.
Supervisor Holmes, you have a question?
Yeah, isn't, it's my understanding that one of the challenges is finding a location. Is that correct?
Correct.
And would it be in the basin, or would it have to be in the basin, or does?
You know, I, from my perspective, it is a tremendous challenge and expense to stay within TRPA's domain.
Right, yeah.
If operationally, it's possible to be outside of that area, that would be preferred, in my opinion.
So there's not enough room to do what needs to be done on this site?
This, this is a challenge due to TRPA regulations, the proximity to, you know, a stream environment zone, and it, it is a significant effort to do something on this site while remaining functional, operational there, and meet all the regulatory requirements. You know, I guess a, a win-win would be if this were to be, you know, restored or, or part of it restored for environmental improvements while the facility goes to a, you know, better location.
So to speak on the operational end, I would have to stress that especially during the peak tourist times of the year, being outside of the basin would be a significant operational impact, and in fact, would probably necessitate the need for a sub-substation somewhere within the basin for my deputies to meet with the public, to be able to write reports, to book evidence. Because going from the basin to, let's say, were built somewhere by the trucky airport, during the peak times of the year could entail an hour to an hour and a half. A response to a call in the basin from a substation located outside of the basin, not even including inclement weather, just the peak tourist seasons, could significantly increase the time that it takes us to respond to the services. In addition to that, the primary recipient, the primary beneficiary of the services that we provide are in the basin. And so I think that having access to the public within the basin is, is a critical component. It's a customer service component that I think we want to safeguard. Mechanically, it's difficult. I absolutely recognize that it is difficult to sites, locate, purchase, and build within the basin. However, there are advantages to locating at a different site than the current facility, returning this to some sort of its original environmental condition, and then benefiting from the coverage credits that we could acquire as a result of that change of, of property ownership. I'm not an expert in any of the mechanics involved with this. I think there is someone in the room who knows a lot more about that than I do. But I understand that we could get double coverage credits if we were to return this particular piece of property back to its original condition. How that process occurs, I can't speak to that.
So, question. Priority one is the site selection, or tier one, is the site selection looking at what the options are. So if we were to approve this and move forward with that portion, there could be the work done on what would it cost to do what you just said? What would it cost to build outside of the basin? What would it cost to have a substation, a smaller substation with a, something outside of the basin? We can study all of that, so we have a much better understanding of what it's going to cost us, et cetera. Because I think that that's the part that we really have to understand. Obviously, there's a need, but we also need to know what all our options are so that we can make a decision that works best given financial constraints. And I'll let you respond. And I do have a question. Are there grant funds that we can get for something like this? I have no idea, from the state, or?
For building substations, I don't, I don't know that there are. There are for equipment. There, there is for, you know, various grants come up for staffing, for specific programs, for equipment, obviously jail funding, jail construction funding, mental health programming. Because there is a jail component, I, I would imagine there might be some grants through the state of California related to programming and realignment. But I have not, I have not actually gone down that rabbit hole, because I think that there could be, could be strings attached to that that I don't necessarily know we want to attach to the rest of this substation building.
I know the, you know, there's courtrooms, and I think Superintendent McGivern and myself had met with the presiding judge about his advocacy to help identify funding sources at a state level, at least for the courtroom component, which obviously, if, if that is commingled together, there are some operational pieces there that could help be funded. But I, I think there needs to be some work done. You know, just to touch on the, the second piece of, of your comment at the beginning, you know, my intent is to look at this and break it into two parts. You know, one of the efforts that we've had is really that identification of a, of a location to even house this. And that's, I think that's been a challenge, whether we have some funding dollars available for construction or not, is inadequacy of a location. And so to potentially move this forward, if this is something of interest, we would probably look to move our real estate services folks to deal with site identification within, in concert with the sheriff's office. It buys some time to talk about the programming aspect, as well as the courthouse in general, and how that would be handled. And it, it, you know, has this, gives us the opportunity to get back with the presiding judge about what that courtroom capacity need is as well. So this is, you know, I think there's obviously a need here. It's just about how do we manage that? And I think the first piece is, you know, land is so difficult to identify and acquire at this point. That may be a good starting point as we move kind of through this whole kind of multi-phased approach to this project.
Yeah, and Bonnie, just to give a little bit of context on the history, the Tahoe court was envisioned by the state of California until about four years ago, when the funding for that court got swept. And they've started to move forward with sort of reallocating dollars to certain courtrooms, but ours unfortunately is not high on their list of priorities. So while the state potentially could have brought some dollars to it around the court, the, I think it was the AOC swept those dollars and does not look, at least at this point, as if they're really looking at bringing those dollars back in the foreseeable future. I think there are a number of parcels, some both in the basin and some out of the basin, that potentially we could take a look at acquiring, whether for, you know, this particular use or other identified county uses up there. I, I think the idea about, you know, let's make the tier one priority on this, the identification and acquisition of land, and then figure out what project gets plugged into that. Obviously, my preference would be the, the Justice Center up there. But I think we should worry less about the specific projects at this point, and more about identifying and acquiring the property so that we actually have an opportunity to, to bring some of these projects forward.
Other questions or comments, Superintendent White?
Yeah, Steve, or somebody, I think I heard the difference between 50, 60, and 25 million. And then I know that over the years, we've looked at all kinds of iterations of things, including partnering with Nevada County, and a myriad of other things I can think of. So I know that's a priority, and since I've been on the board, I also know that we, total budget now consumes more for public protection than it did when I started. And obviously, at any moment in time, we've got resources. So to me, TRPA provides extraordinary challenges, and even if it's 15 minutes from Kings Beach to North Star, that's a whole lot better than the trip from Kings Beach to Auburn. So I guess that's a com, by way of comment, as we go forward, I'm good with doing a site selection, but I guess I want your answer on the $25 million difference. But we can run the numbers on what it would expect us, we could expect as relates to cost savings or additional costs with shorter or longer response times, including within the basin, without it. But certainly, if you're in the basin, it's significantly more expensive than if you're not within the basin, just over the hump to North Star. So I guess specifically, those are my comments. But then, have you done an analysis on the difference in cost?
No. The, the construction itself is going to be the same in that region, construction costs. It's, it's the, you know, the regulatory costs, but even more than that, get, jumping through the, the hoops that are required takes time, and time is money because of escalation, and it's a lot more expensive up there to build. And so when you escalate that, it costs money, clearly. The, the other thing related to this, the, the program and the size of this is a, a very comprehensive and included probation in the 2013 exercise that they did. I think it would be, if, if this project gains some traction, I think it would be prudent for us to sit down and, you know, look at what the appropriate program would be, you know, moving forward. It also includes growth, of course. But then that will also help inform, I think, a site size, certainly. Because the larger the site you need up there, the less available they are, of course. So, but, you know, and if, and if the need for a But, you know, and if the need for a sub-substation, you know, within the basin is a part of that, I mean, we can look at, you know, kind of the cost options between a single facility in the basin versus some small substation and then more remote facility outside of that. Because there, you know, there may be opportunities, I don't know, that arise outside of the basin that may be significant cost-saving opportunities that would then make a, you know, a substation within the basin a viable alternative. But again, I can't speak to the operational challenges that you all face.
Questions, other questions with board members?
So, it seemed to me that if the board were inclined to move forward with the site selection conversation as a tier one project, that we'd probably want to get the sheriff and the DA and probation and facilities together as a first step to say, okay, what, cumulatively, what's our footprint? What do we need? I'm a big fan of bird in the hand. I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't look at maximizing the existing facility that we already have. If it simply isn't doable and there's somehow more value to that as a restoration project than the cost associated with finding a new facility, I mean, a new spot in the basin, I just, we've got disturbance out there, you've got coverage out there, you've got all the things that TRPA looks at. How can you more efficiently use that footprint by going a little bit vertical? And that's all I'm kind of thinking as I look at that particular site. I may be completely wrong. Along those lines, how far down the Truckee River corridor does TRPA jurisdiction extend?
To Alpine Meadows Road.
All the way down there?
Yes.
So, in terms of your thoughts on renovating onsite or building over the top of that going vertical, one of the challenges that we currently face is road department, the upper portion of this is not sheriff's office, that's actually road department. And they pre-deploy their snowplows, blowers, equipment, necessary equipment that they need, because their facility is also outside the basin. It's a Cabin Creek, their primary facility. So, they pre-deploy there, that allows them to get to the residential roads much quicker. So, any consideration on renovating is going to have to include conversations about what we do with the road department, either move them to another location or include it in the same location. You know, there's lots of conversations that would have to take place.
How many total acres do we have at this location?
Sorry, what?
How many total acres do we have at this location? Do we know? What are total per?
I don't have that information in front of me.
So, can I ask some, we kind of have a Tahoe specialist here. Can I ask Jennifer just to kind of weigh in on the pros and cons about redeveloping this particular site? You know, what challenges, what might we, I mean, and I know you're not, you aren't going to have a comprehensive answer.
Don't. Sure. I can say that this is stream environment zone, which if you build in a stream environment zone 1B, you need to pay excess coverage mitigation fees for that.
Even if you're building on existing coverage?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah.
Is that there's nothing there?
What's that?
A fee as if there is nothing there, or is it just an extra fee?
It's an extra fee that you have to pay, and you also have to relocate that to pay for that coverage to go somewhere else. So, it's quite a circle of expense that you get engaged in. You get credits, however, if you remove that and restore it that you could use as an incentive in the Tahoe City Town Center. But that's the two to one that Dennis was referring to. So, that kind of goes back to that earlier conversation about trying to incentivize other good development, what's our return on that investment? And that upper section or a portion thereof also is not ours, at least with the U.S. Forest Service. So, I don't know how that fits into things. I actually think that might be a portion of higher capability land. So, there are a lot of different layers of conversation that need to go into this.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
Anything else they would like to add to this conversation? Nope, okay.
So, we, you know, we've gone over these, I think it's, what is it, four, eight, 10 different projects. Two of the projects were kind of a breakout of the Tahoe Justice Center. Let me recap what we talked about, tier one projects and then tier two and tier three. I think it wasn't shown in that sequential order, so I want to talk to these briefly. The Crime Lab was a tier one project due to its, you know, various natures and timing of when some decisions about at least evaluating that project are. The administration building was, the domes relocation building was there. Our HHS office building was another one. And then, we talked about the Tahoe Justice Center, but it was really in the context of kind of site identification. But based on your conversation, it could include really a more programmatic slash light identification conversation. So, that was tier one. Tier two was the ag building, and that was Farm Advisor Building, really again predicated on decisions about some of these tier one projects. And then the Tahoe Justice Center, the actual construction was tier two. So, again, broke that out in that phase for that specific reason. Then we step back to tier three projects. The District Attorney's Office Building that's at the Santucci Center is one that we put as a tier three. I think it has a longer-term view to it and some opportunities that we can maybe work on some of the programmatic aspects there. The Corporation Yard, a maintenance facility, is one that is a little longer term. I think it's something that between Ken and myself, and I think talking with Steve, there's some, you know, that's a conversation that can take place a little longer. And there wasn't a direct funding source as identified for that at this time. The Fab or Annex Building tied to the current Fab Building. I think some of the comments that you had made, I think Supervisor Yular regarding, you know, the future role, is that the location of where that expansion needs to occur for some of those specific programs within the current Fab Building? Does that need to reside at the WIT Center or not? This was a conversation about, do we have growth space? We didn't talk about some of the programmatic aspects in our current Fab Building, but we have our OES operations just running out of there as well. That could potentially be moved if the need arises. So, there is some opportunity for growth space. Again, we didn't really talk about some of the domino effects. We kind of alluded to it in some of these buildings, but that was the reason why that was a tiered three project. And then the Warehouse Museum, that was a project that we felt there's just other priorities at this point that we want to look at, and there's other ways to kind of address their building needs at this time. So, what I want to do is kind of share with you that was kind of our breakout, maybe get some feedback. What I'd like to know is, are there some priority projects you'd like us as a staff to come back with, one, a financing plan? And obviously, there's some operational areas that we need to invest and spend a little more time on. And then truly, a project timeline for you all so that we can talk about how, not only from a facility standpoint, they manage these projects, but also how do we, how would we do a financing package that would align with that? Understanding cost escalations of these projects continue to take effect, and we want to be diligent about the timeline of how we do it. I will tell you, the financing piece is not only money. We saw a high-level overview of some cash that we have available. There are some other funding opportunities that we want to flesh out that are generally known, but we want to solidify those to bring them forward. The other is, there's financing options here. We have, you know, lease, lease purchase options as well as our own capital financial debt instruments that we can propose to you all as well. And that would be all encompassing of, for each individual project that you may want us to look at more in-depth. So, I'll leave it at there and open up questions for.
Superintendent Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone, for your participation and all the interest. I have no objection to moving forward with the Crime Lab since we do have a potential collaboration with Sacramento State and partners, so I don't have any objection moving forward with that. And then, the HHS building really has some exciting opportunities moving forward with that, seeing all the other things that we could, the domino effect that would affect the rest of the campus out there. So, right off the top of my head, I think those are the two highest priorities I'd like to see as far as financing and how we can work together collaboratively.
Okay. Superintendent Wagon?
I think I pretty much agree with that on, the only thing I want to do is I want to put Scott in the position of actually supporting the District Attorney Office Building before the Crime Lab, just because I just would enjoy that joke. The older I get, Scott, the more irreverent I get, and I.
We're going to work in Tahoe. We're going to need to have some skills left. We're going to work up on our.
So, I'm good with staff's recommendations coming in as it relates to tiers one, two, and three. I've long been talking, going through therapy about the fact that HHS building is just, you know, disgusting and has a lot of ramifications. And in and of itself, it looks to me like the numbers fit and kind of comes together well. On the Crime Lab, frankly, if you were to ask me would I spend $30 million to build a Crime Lab plus the operational cost annually, in and of itself, I don't know that I would support it because we're, we have a safe county and we only have so much money at a particular point in time. But it's also an example of exactly, I think, the way we want to look at all of these opportunities in that. If you can find more partners and they sort of pick up a portion of the fixed cost, then our portion is less and our ROI goes up. And in this case, I really want us to keep that big-picture perspective, not only on that project, but on everything else we do. So, of course, for me, hopefully, we'll be processing the Plaza Ranch application, finish it up by the end of the year. We've got plenty of time to work through these kinds of issues, but have a good handle, more information to the county, to the board, as to what the actual out-of-pocket expenses would be operationally as well as capital expenditures, but what that, you know, ideally a vision, for example, is, I think the board has ongoingly said that citing a California State University in the county is something that is of extraordinary policy, such that we've considered some other policy compromises to possibly get it in place. We're not there yet, but it is a measure at least of that prioritization by the board. So, that kind of thought of looking at that and all of these projects where we can find partners and make things go more quickly and financing options, including the Tahoe Justice Center. So, it's long been a thorn in the board's side from the very day that I came to the board. We've looked at a lot of different options. I'm happy to resolve that. If we go forward, which is what I support in phase one, with a site selection, it really does still need to take into consideration the cost of capital operations if it's in the basin as compared to out, but the ongoing cost of, there'd be some cost savings, it sounds like if we were in the basin as compared to out, and we just need to have that more holistic economic perspective to get a really good handle on the ROI. And then, I'm not clear if we did the HHS facility, that sounds like it's farther down the road because of the environmental review we did. As I understand, that the environmental review was on par for the HHS facility with the EIR work we were doing for the master plan. So, it's kind of down the road in that regard. And we actually got that building built quickly. Does that then relieve us of the need to do any of the investments with regards to the ag advisor? Or does it make them less, or does it make them more temporary or?
There would be, there would be some renovation costs that would be attributed to moving, if they're moving into where currently our facilities group is located, but it's nowhere near the cost of a $12 million building or something in that standpoint. So, I have no problem looking at some of the domino effects. We can really dive into that and see the offsets that are, would be attributed by not, by doing something in a human services building versus if we, you didn't move forward, what would be the ancillary projects? So, I think that would be a good talking point to talk about the offsets that are occurring as a result of bringing them and bringing a bunch of these groups that they're just disparate throughout the county in terms of human services.
So, as we go forward, I'd like that kind of feedback. And I'll just make a plug that with my district, maybe a little bit more than the others, the ag stuff is big still.
Sure.
The ag facility is as bad as the HHS facility. HHS, of course, in terms of the total impact on the county and the budget and employees, is a bigger animal, so that kind of drives some prioritization. But I've been in meetings in the ag building with people that I've tried to collect together so we can talk about things like a slaughterhouse. It's not short of actually being embarrassing, not to mention not being, facilitating the best opportunity for discussions, and there's got to be some huge operational infractions to that, so. And then lastly, in the old days when we started this kind of stuff way back when, we would come back periodically with the, I think we always had three tiers, as I recall, but we had a pretty good handle on the first tier in terms of our total cost and when those facilities would actually be completed, which should be doable, and I'd like to see that occur again. And then the second tier was less certain, and it didn't matter. And then the third tier was even less certain than that, and it didn't matter. But in that first facility plan, the board administration office was in the third tier and expected to be like 15 or 20 years out, and now it's been 25 years. So, it's, you know, I mean, it's, that's fine with me because, you know, it kind of fit our expectations, maybe a little on the worse side. But if we had more precise information, I think it would be good for a range of reasons, particularly ongoing communication and expectations for the county and the people we serve.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Superintendent Wagon?
Thank you. Looking over the tiered list and prioritizing these, I think off the tiered list, there are two that jump out to me as just critically important. The first is the HHS building. I think it offers a lot of other opportunities that follow on from that as well, so I think that's something that we should really consider leveraging. And then, the Tahoe Justice Center, though we're going to be characterizing that as site identification acquisition, I think to me, that's really critically important, and it has been the stumbling block on moving forward with this for the 10 years I've been a county supervisor and long before that, which is, we all know we need to do this, we all know we need to upgrade it, change it, make some, you know, different choices up there, but we haven't identified any pieces of property upon which we could actually do that. So, I think it's critically important that we do that. That will then enable us to actually move forward with the project itself and better serve the residents of Eastern Placer County. In terms of the other two that are on, in the tier one list, I find it amusing that the 1993 Capitol Facilities Master Plan identified the domes annex replacement as a phase one project that was supposed to happen in 1996. Obviously, hasn't, there's probably people in this room who weren't even born then, but, you know, to me, that is still probably less of a priority than either the HHS office building or doing something around a Tahoe Justice Center. As much as we all hate working in the domes on some days, it is something that we can continue to do. I don't think it puts us in any particular public safety risk. It's not a great place to work, but I think in terms of just getting feedback to constituents and taxpayers in Placer County, that's probably a lower priority for me. I'm kind of in alignment with Robert on the criminal justice master plan, the Crime Lab. I want to see how that really pencils out. I mean, I recognize that we have some nice letters of support from the counties. I don't see them committing to actually anything in there in terms of paying their costs. They're not really covering them now, as I understand it. And I think if we're going to have partners in this, they need to bring some real skin in the game to this, and that means the counties and it means Sac State as well. I recognize that it could have great economic development initiative behind it, but getting it built and operating it is the critical question for us as a board, and I want to make sure that if this is something that the board chooses to move forward with, that we really have done the full analysis and we really are getting our partners to step up and bear their share of the cost. And as far as the tier two and tier three priorities, I'm satisfied them with remaining within tier two and tier three. I think there's some great opportunities around the ag and Farm Advisor Building and the Tahoe Justice Center if we can move these other tier one. If we can move these other tier one projects forward, we'll then actually activate your projects.
Supervisor Corr.
Okay, maybe I'll just use that microphone. All right, thank you. A couple of things as far as CIP funds. So if I look at the chart in Attachment E, if I add that up correctly, estimated CIP funds in, available in next five years, approximately $6 million would come in from fees. It looks like it's $87 million. Is that correct? Did I add that up correctly? Am I doing that correct, my basic math? So we, we have cash that would be available over the next five years.
We would, yeah. With the one caveat being the, the first row, general fund, capital reserve in column B, it assumes that your board would put $4 million worth of cash into reserves each fiscal year within those five years. So that would just be a, a call that your board makes annually.
Okay. But we've got a good $80 million over the next five years in capital improvement funds, which is, which is good to note, and I, I want to say that out loud because it means that we have some dollars to work with, which is terrific. And that would include fees, estimated fees from, say, Bigford Ranch and Placer Vineyards. Correct? No?
That would be a, there's another attachment, attachment-
Missed that.
C, I believe it is, the multi-colored one, if you have it in your packet. That speaks to all of the capital facilities planned for to serve new developments, so new developments specifically mainly in the West Placer region. And there, Attachment D, I apologize. And there are fee programs associated with many of those, if not most of them. So some projects, some of the buildings will actually be funded and constructed by developers straight up. Some will be funded by a fee program and constructed by the county. But in general, they are handled separately from the funding sources that you see here.
So those projects will provide for the facilities in those projects, no county facilities? Well, county facilities outside of the project areas.
Yeah, they would, they would generally be facilities needed to serve that particular development. So a fire station, a library, a park, those types of things.
So as far as the projects that we have, obviously, there's a need for the Health and Human Services, and I don't think there's a disagreement about that. And I know that the administrative building is not as necessary. There's certainly need for more office space. As your staff grows, there's not a lot of space. I would be interested in seeing how we might be able to, you know, utilize economies of scale with a master developer and see if there's a way to pencil that out to save millions of dollars at the same time. There might be an opportunity to do that, especially with Supervisor Yular's comment about infrastructure. And if you're going to have to bring in expensive infrastructure and move it down, there might be some economies of scale. So I think I'd be interested in looking at that. Definitely a need to do the site selection for the Tahoe Justice Center, that is very clear. And then as far as the crime lab, you know, this, this is really interesting because my first thought was, why do we need to do a crime lab when we don't have that much crime in Placer County? We are very fortunate, right? And then had some conversations and did a little bit digging and asking some questions. And, you know, there's an opportunity, if it all works out, to leverage Sac State and their, you know, a great project that could come from that. But to me, it is just unconscionable what's happening at the state level and the fact that it is taking so long to get tests that keep our criminal justice system moving the way it should, right? That's just, to me, unconscionable. And when I find out the Attorney General is talking about actually closing crime labs, and I honestly didn't believe our DA when he told me that, so I picked up the phone. I mean, I just thought, that's crazy. Honestly. And I, I'm like, I trust you, Scott, but at the same time, I'm, you know, trust but verify.
That's my terrified, yeah.
So I did contact another DA and I asked the questions. You know, are you experiencing that? Well, they have their own crime lab. So I asked the question, can, you know, what would it take? Could Placer County utilize your crime lab? And not to the extent that we would want to, you know, there's parameters around, we couldn't even fund our own person to go there, and they would have, they'd have to stay over our own person working there, and they wouldn't be able to do all the tests we would want them to do. So there's those challenges. And if we're in this, if we're in this problem, if we're in this situation as a county, I can't imagine what it's like in Nevada County and Butte County and all the counties around here if we can't even get what we need and we're the largest county north of Sacramento. So I agree with you Supervisor Montgomery, that we need to make sure this pencils out. I, I think it's really important that we find as many grant funds as we can, which it sounds like there are a lot, not only from the state after it's built, but through, if we're working with Sacramento State, there's a lot of opportunity to get some grant funding, which I think is really important. My, my first thought was, this is really, really expensive. At the same time, I, I just look at this and I think, shoot. We can't, we can't provide common public safety and justice for our community members. So I think it's certainly worth looking at and making sure the dollars pencil out if there's a place to ultimately house it. And as far as the other tiers, I'm in agreement with. I know that we don't have enough dollars to do everything, but I think that is another question of, how do we pencil it out? Are there some financing dollars? Are there opportunities to do some bonds? If we, if we do have a JPA for the crime lab, could we do something like that for that property? You know, I don't like debt. At the same time, can we be creative and leverage some of the funds that we have to get some of these projects accomplished?
Okay. I'll just take them in order in regard to Scott's Field of Dreams. I, I, I look at this as, is our board willing to commit to moving this project forward? We're not going to be spending any money on construction anytime soon. An awful lot has to happen. We've got a Plaza Ranch project that's going to have to be, assuming that we move forward with the idea of this cohabitating with a Sac State, which I don't even want to say anymore, what I want to say is California State University Placer campus in the Plaza Ranch project. It's going to be a while before we actually start stinking, sinking money into this. I think what, what folks need to hear is, if the pieces fall into place, is our board committed to making this happen? And I say yes. So that's where I am on that. The administration building, domes and annex replacement, as much as I want to be the guy who calls in the airstrike to blow those damn buildings off the map, I, I will agree with Supervisor Montgomery that we can suffer along. My angst wasn't agreeing with you. My angst was agreeing that we can, we can suffer along in those buildings a little bit longer. But, but yeah, those buildings were identified as, as antiquated and in need of replacement very early on. HHS building, I'm reminded, I think it was 2004, the county secured the self-generation incentive program dollars at $3.50 a watt in order to put solar on those. And the folks, the company doing it called me, I wasn't a county supervisor at the time, just want to get this disclaimer out there, called me to ask, do you think this is a project worth moving forward? And I said, how long do you need for your repayment? They said, well, we think seven to nine years, we'll get the, the payback and then we'll be in the black. I'm like, oh, I don't know if those buildings are going to be around for seven to nine years. In 2004, I was thinking, I don't know if they're going to be around for seven to nine years. And lo and behold, system paid itself off and continues to generate on buildings that we're lucky to have, actually with the structural support to hold those solar panels up still. So yes, we need to move that forward. Having said that, and with my reluctance to continue to occupy the domes, I will again put it back in the context of, we need to understand what is, what is the art of the possible at DuWitt with a private, public partnership up there. And I think our board will be, if we allow for the right kind of creativity in terms of land use, location of facilities, all those things up there, I think we will be favorably impressed by what we see back in terms of what the market can do to help us meet our needs up, up at the DuWitt Center. So moving on to Tahoe Justice Center, I'm along with everybody else. We've got to do something, but let's understand the facility's need first. We've heard 25,000 to 50,000 square feet. We've heard 50 million bucks versus 20 million or something. I mean, so let's just understand who's in, who's doing what. As far as the Farm Advisor's concerned, I'm wondering why, when you're talking about a slaughterhouse, you feel like you need to meet in a nice facility? I don't, I don't understand how that conversation needs to be held in Class A office space as opposed to somebody's basement, quite frankly, but. The only thing that I, I would look at, in recognition that it's probably going to be a while before we spend any actual dollars on a, a crime lab. I mean, an awful lot has to happen from a planning and infrastructure standpoint. I would encourage us to take a look at that DA's office building, and, and it's, I think it would be more than just a DA's office, a new office building at the Santucci Center from the standpoint of, what does the market bear? What, what could we rent out if we overbuild? If we rent out existing building B and build the building A? However, that's supposed to work. If we do that and we have rental rate stuff available, is there an absorption that we can capture that helps pay for any of the new facility? So those are my thoughts. Other than that, I, I appreciate the very in-depth presentation by all departments today. And I think the fact that we're sitting here having a conversation about how to prioritize capital expenditures is a marvelous thing when you look around not too far from us at other public agencies that are talking about insolvency. And here we are talking about what buildings we're going to build first. I think it's a wonderful thing. So unless there are any other comments from any of my colleagues? I don't see any, anybody else? Any last? No? No one? Going once, going twice? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and call this meeting done. And our next meeting of the Board of Supervisors is a regularly scheduled meeting on March 26th, back over in those wonderful offices that we have. Thank you all very much.